All right, why don't we start with the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting. And I will start with any comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda. And seeing none, David, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
We do not. I think we're good for tonight.
All right. So why don't we move on to announcements?
So you have announcements in front of you. We have no students to read through those. Couple of things we'll just hit upon here. Those of you who had the opportunity to hear, it was a surprise to me, but Patrick Burke was a Rotary Club recipient of the Fred Tuttle Award at the Rotary, so he was published in the paper. Again, we're proud of that. Also, the students at Orchard, and I was there for this, and I think I sent something out maybe just before or just after, but I was asked to present the big check from code.org for their participation in the power of code. And so that was for Orchard School. And then the other one, actually, I shared this, I happened to be in, also at Orchard, covering the building as Mark was out, and a woman, just Gladys Dosty, just dropped them off and just wanted to make sure kids had hats. And it was just, it was just wonderful. And I didn't get a chance to see her. She had dropped them off and just wanted to give them and left. And I just felt it was appropriate, you know, what a nice gesture of a community member doing that and wanted to let her know that. Bart Micali and his team, also part of our work as Energy Conscious District, we've had the opportunity to be awarded the EPA Energy Star rating, which will eventually assist us as we progress with our energy conservation work.
Great. And I had a couple, just to update everybody, there were a number of meetings this week or last week that board members were able to attend. One was the city council meeting on Monday evening, I believe Martin and Dan attended, and Martin had an opportunity to present the brief that the board prepared in advance of the legislative session, starting with some of our proposals and our background information. Martin and I also were able to attend the administrators' meeting this week, and we had a legislative session with House Representatives and Senate Representatives from Chittenden County this morning, and we had an opportunity to present our brief to those folks as well. And then I think, Martin, you went to the Vermont digger?
Yes, last week, education funding, some posts.
Great. Any quick comments on that, or?
I think it was fairly consistent with what we've been hearing. I mean, if you had a half hour, I could get into it.
Was that largely, was that largely the Schap Smith's working committee discussion?
There were a couple people from the committee, but there were, there was somebody from, is it Public Assets Institute?
Yeah.
Paul Shilla was there, and then there was somebody from the Vermont, I forget the name of, the Keep Vermont Strong campaign, I probably have that wrong, but two economists were presenting some different data as well, which was quite interesting.
And then also, the VASBO, John, that's the Vermont School Board Business Managers Association, I have the wrong acronym.
Association of School Board.
But John and I had an opportunity to serve on a panel together at their, one of their meetings last Friday down at the FSBA offices as well. So thank you for doing that.
You too.
All right. Any other announcements?
Just a couple of quick other ones. I wanted to, you know, with a lot of the work that's going on, master planning and visioning that's going on, there's one, again, I wanted to make the board aware that, you know, we are working to ensure that we get some communication out, and so there is a communication update. We have an individual by the name of Cindy Weed who's going to assist us around master planning and visioning and communication, so there'll be a series of press releases that will be going out, and I just want you to be aware of that. So those are also by your side, some of the information that will go out. In addition, I think it's important not to forget about this Chamberlain Neighborhood Airport and Planning Committee that we all know, you know, was going to happen. I think it's likely, a lot of people are wondering, it is still going to happen. Kevin Dorn did update me that that's a January, it looks like a January date to start. So often, we're guilty of starting things or saying things and then not keeping people posted around that, so I wanted to just close that loop with you. Thank you.
Diane?
So I just wanted to say that this week is the week that Big Picture South Burlington Student Exhibitions are happening, and I had a chance to attend one, and it's always refreshing to see students present their work. You know, this was for the fall term, and so it was really enjoyable to do that.
All right. Seeing no other announcements, we'll move on to Agenda Item Six, Policy Governance. Want to kick that off?
Sure. So let me introduce Harry Frank, who's here from the Vermont School Boards Association. We're happy to have you here, Harry. And, you know, one of the overall desires, and I'm proud of this, is that we continue to work at the work that we do together. And obviously, our work under policy governance has been one that we've been working at for quite some time, and we continue to ask, what I would say, deep-rooted questions at times. Sometimes we have answers, sometimes we work them out, sometimes we say, I don't know. So in the spirit of continuous improvement, we're welcoming you here tonight to help us keep on that learning curve. So welcome, Harry. I don't know that you know everybody here at the table, so maybe?
Well, I didn't say hello to everybody, but I have, at some point, anyway, met everyone, so it's nice to join you. Thanks for the introduction.
All right. So great. So we'll let you kind of kick it off.
Is this a good place for me to sit?
Yeah.
It'd be better if I'm over here. What's the?
Whatever.
As long as they can hear you on the mics, I think you're good.
Okay, all right. Great. I just want to give a little context to why I'm here from the FSBA perspective, and then it sounds like we've got forty, forty-five minutes or so to work together. I think probably FSBA is familiar enough. What I want to say is that the Policy Governance Network is a group of thirty-two boards from around the state, all of whom practice policy governance. And I would say that means, there's a broad continuum of what that means. I think the principles are good governance principles, they're principles that the FSBA endorses, and the way they come to light is unique based on the board. And while that may not be true entirely to the structure of pure policy governance, our perspective as an association has been, we need to figure out tools and resources that work for people rather than insisting on a framework that begins to chafe at local history, practices, aspirations. So our work has begun to take this shape, meaning I visit each of the boards, or some representation of each of the boards over the span of a twelve-month period, and essentially conduct something like this, which I call Work Session, which is really an opportunity for you to say, here's the work we're most interested in, or most proud of, or the biggest questions we have. And because we approach it as very much a collegial exchange, my hope is that it serves your purposes most of all. The benefit for other members of this network is that I'll take the recording from tonight's session and archive it on our website and attach the links to documents that we look at, or at least that I've brought tonight. So in that sense, you're contributing to this growing archive for board work. And then, I guess I would just finally want to reiterate, to me, it really is about collegial exchange, exploration. I appreciate, David, your comment. Sometimes you say you don't know. I'm on that same page on a daily basis. And I think the point is to be able to have a conversation constructively and figure out how to get the answers when, if you're not sure what they are, or certainly I'm not sure. So with that in mind, what I had talked to Elizabeth and David about was looking at ends metrics, right? This idea that you've established aspirations that you want all of your students to strive for. In some way, your job then as a board, as a governing body, is to make sure you're progressing, you're getting there. And in the process, probably learn more about what your ends are and how maybe to refine them, as well as how to measure them effectively. So my interest or my effort tonight is to help shape a conversation around what do useful ends metrics look like that are out there for you to draw on, and for you to talk about which of these begins to speak to what we want and can do effectively. I mean, I think there's a reality check that we've got to include in these kinds of conversations. So that's what my approach will be this evening. Here's what I want to do to start, and I know you've got, I think I should reference this since it's in front of you already, the kinds of questions I was asking leading up to tonight's session are on this outline of the first hour, as well as the resources I want to make sure that I touch on. We may not talk in depth about all of these, and some of you may be much more versed in them than I am, but there's certainly landmarks that I think are useful to look at and be familiar with. And then, of course, you know, a little mention of the next session and where we're going to give you a flavor of what we address. Do you have questions at this point?
You know, I think, just a quick comment here, based on our conversation. Our board refers to our practice of policy governance in terms of modified policy governance because we just can't discipline ourselves to adhere to it in the strict fashion that it was originally introduced years ago. We also struggle with the limitations language, as probably a lot of boards do. I think one of the guiding principles that's helped us over the years, when we look at the policy level, is sort of what do we fear may happen, so that sort of addresses the broad guardrails. But one of the areas that we also continue to struggle with is when a specific issue comes up, defining it in terms of policy governance, and then really charging our leadership to address that. And then if we get out of sync with a monitoring report period of time and an issue that's come up, just sort of how do we accelerate that conversation as well? So I know when David and I spoke to you, one of the areas that I think you're going to spend the most time on, helping us walk through, is of our four ends policies, one of the areas, we have a lot of metrics around academic proficiency, we have some metrics in other areas. Personal development, 1.3 is the area that we've had quite a bit of conversation on, what should the right metrics be? What metrics would measure kind of K through 12 progress, or pre-K through 12 progress here? And really establishing a platform off of which we can communicate with our community what the outcomes have been, what the metrics are, and are we seeing progress in this area? And then obviously, we all see it as pretty dynamic, that once you establish those, you can change them as well. So hopefully, that sets the stage for my colleagues and for prefacing your comments in the workshop as well.
That's great. I really appreciate that perspective. Other thoughts ahead of time or questions? Okay, well, on David and Elizabeth prompting, what I want to do is put this in your hands, and I wrestled with the idea of sending you all this information ahead of time and having you start to dig into it, and kind of unveiling it as we go. I've taken the unveiling-as-we-go approach, and I hope that will be useful. So I think what I'd like you to do is just take a minute to look through this. It's an overview of Montpelier's approach to, I think, very much what we're talking about tonight, and I think there's a lot of alignment with respect. While they don't use precisely the same language that you do, personal development, I think, is here. So I think it would be helpful, take a minute, read through this. I think my question initially is going to be, what strikes you from this document relative to this task you've set for yourselves of identifying effective metrics for measuring ends, particularly around personal development?
Do you have our detailed personal development?
I don't have it.
It's in the book. Yeah, what, I mean, if I can kind of react initially, it looks like Montpelier's sort of two and three capture some of the areas that we've described in personal development. And I'm actually, I just asked David if he can get our detail out here. I think we sent that to you ahead of time, but?
The end statements?
Yes, yes, some of the detail under personal development.
I actually brought copies of that.
Oh.
I do have copies. Do you want me to send these around, so people have them as a?
So the challenge tonight will be to see if I actually brought copies of everything. So far, we're off to a decent start. But I copied it because I had the same thought. Okay, well, what are you saying specifically? How does that line up here? What else might be in your mind as you think about personal development?
Yeah, one question I would have on this is, as you look, I don't know if you had a chance to look at this, Harry, but if you look at Montpelier's indicators on two and three, were there any that you felt matched up to our 1.3 personal development ends with, we have six areas identified here?
Here's the overriding thought I had when I looked at this area, and I said briefly to David. So the material from Montpelier, I wasn't aware of until this morning, and I had a meeting with their curriculum director wholly unrelated to this topic. But of course, as conversations are often, often lead you to places you hadn't anticipated, he ended up walking me through this work and some others. What struck me was, he continually said something like this, what we want to put the emphasis on is providing students avenues to explore their interests and make the most of them, as opposed to trying to pin down measures first. Now, I think the two are not separable, and in fact, I think the subtle work in exploration is what are the component pieces? And so, you know, clearly, they've tried to do that, but I think they continually turn to things like service. So my, I'm trying to answer your question, and my thought is something like, I think when it comes together, both in developing an individual or a personal learning plan, and the experience of enacting those, you know, acting on those interests, so that these holistic moments in a student's career are where I think, and this is one perspective, but I think he's speaking from a lot of discussion, that those are the places they feel are the most powerful manifestations of this kind of learning, and that in fact, they can, I mean, they can be measured, right? I mean, on one level, have you had this experience? Have you been, have you taken your learning into a different context? So there's a pure participation data point. Clearly, there's a planning process that gets you there, there's some kind of reflective process that you can document. Those are also really powerful data points to collect.
And does Montpelier document them? I'm just curious if they, do they have actual documentation of those experiences?
So service learning experience specifically?
Yeah.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
I did bring a couple of rubrics from Montpelier. So one of the links you can get to, as you go here to Mission Ends and Indicators, you can also go to Learning Expectations. And so I brought some of those rubrics. This was where I was starting to hesitate from sending you all these links ahead of time, but I think it might be useful, so let's look at, well, there are two here. Let me put these in your hands, not to overcomp, but one's called Habits of Learning. So this is how they're trying to, so rubric for assessing student learning, right? So this isn't, you know, I think I'm preaching to the fire here. So let me put it in your hands before trying to, oh, and then there's a second one titled Citizenship, just so you keep, so there are two pages coming around. And I'm trying to answer, sorry, I forget. Julie, your question about, so do they have examples of this? So I didn't look this morning at actual student portfolios, to be able to say, but I started looking at some of these rubrics to want to understand, what is it that they're expecting to see in a portfolio, or in documentation of an internship, or a service learning experience, or something that wouldn't have been defined previously by a curriculum, per se, you know, Algebra II curriculum, or something like that, where you could make a lot of assumptions about, not just assumptions, you'd have a lot of evidence to look at. So I think these are helpful in going the next level down, in terms of trying to answer your question. I think ultimately, the challenge for a governing board is, what, at what level do we establish our expectation or establish a policy? Certainly, it's not at the depth of a rubric for, right, assessing a certain learning experience. But on the other hand, you've got to be confident that that is measuring, deep down, what ultimately culminates in personal development. So I think, you know, that's why it's worth going down in here to understand it, and, you know, I think it's right, I'm sort of turning, because you work in curriculum, and so, you know, I certainly don't present myself as the expert on the rich dimensions of curriculum, so much as ultimately, a governing board, right, and policy governance is good about, sort of making this message clear, your job is to say, here's what the culmination of all these things needs to look like.
Let me just make a comment. I mean, looking at our personal development 1.3, I'll just pick an example, number four, living responsibly, living responsibly with confidence, resilience, and adapt, maybe I shouldn't have picked number five.
Where are you?
I'm going to pick number five, because I can probably read it. Demonstrating effective time management, no, that one's too easy. We'll go number three, building capacity to make informed and healthy decisions, choices. I could see, I could say that one. So my concept of how this would work is that, at the level of each grade, perhaps, they would have a rubric that would be much like what you've shown us here. And what we're, the metrics that we're actually getting would be the observations of the teachers on whether their individual students are meeting those rubrics, or where they're placed on these rubrics. And that's presumably what could be happening out at the school level. And then what the board sees is that sixty percent meets, you know, expectations, or exceeds, and twenty percent, et cetera, et cetera, and that's the level that we see. At least that, that kind of seems to me a way to approach this, and I think, to some extent, we are approaching it that way. Or maybe I'm missing that detail. I mean, is that along the lines of?
No, that's along the lines. The question always is, is it every kid being observed in this way for every piece, because it's a lot of stuff?
Right.
And the other question that I have really is, where does this fall into the whole concept of transferable skills? In other words, the game has changed because the EQS, when these were established, they were established before the state said, here are five, you know, basically, ends that all kids will graduate with, and they are now in the process of creating rubrics and assessments related to those. I'm curious what?
Yeah. But that's a different question. That's whether our ends are the right ends, as opposed to?
Well, it is, but it's that continuous moving target that I think has made it very hard to always know what should we be assessing, or how do we get our teachers to know what to do in a way?
Philosophic, I mean, I think the way Martin has presented that, I mean, that's exactly, it's, you know, from, you know, far away, you know, at the school level and the classroom level, this is the rubric that's being deployed, and as it rolls up, it provide, you know, we're providing, or I'm providing you with clarity around percent of, you know, individuals within our district meeting, exceeding, et cetera, these levels. And you hold me accountable to say, okay, then if they're all not on the achieving level and they're down here, what are you doing with resources or about it to get them there? And that's really, I think, the, across where we really struggled here, Harry, is, and I think Stewart's alluded to that, is that where some of our ends are more easily measured, we've struggled with how we collect, how we, and how we, you know, get to this, get to that level.
We've worked that. I think we've also, I mean, just for the benefit of this discussion, a reminder that we actually had to, we've recalibrated our ends even internally a number of times where we, you know, we've run into almost, you know, inter-facility cultural feedback that did require, we had to go through an internal calibration on our ends initially, so there was a common understanding across all of our buildings and grade levels, and you're seeing, actually, years of work that kind of went into this. Now we're having the overlay of not only personal learning plans, but EQS and so forth, and kind of always anticipating that we're going to have to calibrate again against some external standard. And maybe, I don't know if I'd say we're cautious about going too far down the path of establishing rubrics that we're going to start reporting out at the board level, knowing that those might have to be modified once again. I would also say, from an overlay standpoint, we have a lot of, I'll refer to them as culminating programs within our delivery system. The Big Picture Program that Diane mentioned is sort of a school within a school.
Yeah.
And there's a very well-articulated portfolio, for instance, that would be available for those students who participate in that program, that might not be the same evidence for other groups of students. We have a Fly and Ryan program that is really a kind of values-based assessment, it's part of our sophomore advisory. We're in the second year of a Roland Foundation Grant that's looking at expanding our advisories across high school, maybe even into eighth grade. And so we have culminating, is that the right word, David? Kind of culminating programs at the high school level that may or may not be the right evidence in terms of both how many students participated, how many students successfully completed those. There's certainly, I think every board member has participated in what I'd refer to as direct inspection. We've all attended, probably on an annual basis, we each go to at least three or four sophomore advisories. So, and the Big Picture Portfolio, or the, what do you call?
Exhibitions.
The exhibitions, which are really kind of a status report. So we have the balance of the program, and then I think what Stewart focuses on is the rubric side of it at other grade levels. And we're not entirely sure that there's a scarcity of evidence, it's not well organized, and I think, I think we need to be thinking about this in terms of where are their individual student checks along the way, so that, as David said, we understand kind of the report out at the policy level. So there's a lot of information coming at us that we're aware of, and it's calling it out. Again, I'm talking too long, but, anyway, that's a little bit of a framework of what's available right now.
And I guess I would also add that, I, that it may be a moving target some places, but this target is fairly well set, and we're working towards figuring out what this is and what's happening at the state level. We'll try to feed what we're doing here up to the state level. But getting back to kind of the nitty-gritty of this, it seems that, you know, you can have a rubric for each of these, you know, under personal development, and as a rubric is being developed, if it's, if it really isn't measurable, and maybe there are some, but I would think through observations, most of these things a teacher will understand in his or her students, and would be able to fill out a rubric. But if there are some that are, that can't be observed, right, there could be some sort of proxies as well. I mean, are the kids being provided at least the opportunity to do something that will expand their ability to clarify goals and aspirations, for instance? You know, maybe you can't measure if they've clarified it, but as the proxy is that, in this class, this is, in fact, is being taught, a unit on being this class, this is, in fact, is being taught, a unit on being able to goal set or whatever. Does that make sense? I'm not sure if that's making sense, but there's either direct observation or there's a proxy if you cannot directly observe it. But it seems to me, the first step is to figure out what can be directly observed by the teachers.
And I also think that what's directly observed has to be communicated, so that if a parent says, you know, I mean, if it's like a yes or no, they haven't demonstrated building capacity to make informed decisions, well, what does that look like in second grade? What does that look like in fifth grade? You know, what should a parent be expecting in each of those developmental areas?
So the other, I think you're right on both those comments. I mean, it seems to me you're digging into all the right kinds of questions. The personal learning plan, of course, to me, is this provocative device that's now on the horizon, because it fundamentally says, it's not just, well, and I'm not saying, you're saying, it's just teacher observation, but the notion of a personal learning plan is that the student, and for that matter, the parent and school staff have, you know, there's a conversation about what, where do you need to go? What are the many ways you could get there? And ultimately, it's about following the process, because I think the assumption is, you know, it's not gonna be a direct line from A to B. There's gonna be some wandering around here. So this is great. I actually have another rubric for you, but because. You know, people are also trying to figure out, well, so what would a PLP rubric look like? Like, what would, as this is developing, you know, what are the kinds of conversations and questions? And this is, this is good, because you're a K-12 system, right? So this is a K-8. I think sometimes we talk so much about students graduating from high school as sort of the focal point of our ends, and it is, in the sense that that's truly the end, the end of their learning experience directly with you as a school system. But of course, right, it doesn't begin and end there. So, I mean, a couple of thoughts here, right? I was, I'm just trying to think about the comments that people are making. So, hopes and dreams, that's a pretty nebulous idea, right? And certainly, I think we could say, a given conversation with a teacher might reveal something, interactions with peers, something. What I like about this is this idea that, and I'm interpreting, so I, I'm not sure I know precisely all the thinking behind this rubric, but clearly, what they're saying is, it's about the student figuring out what those are. And there are many, many external factors that may play into this. But what we're looking for as we progress over this first, and of course, the PLP isn't a requirement until grade seven, right? So these are almost the pre-skills and experiences that you would want a student to begin to have, so that by the time seventh grade comes around, it isn't this brand-new concept that your part, you have a say, you have an obligation to speak to what you want to be as a student and where you wanna go, even in the most sort of, you know, abstract areas. And so I think there's thought that needs to be given to the PLP process itself, and then, of course, then that process taps into all these other rubrics potentially. I certainly don't wanna, you know, I think it can be overwhelming to begin to think about all of this work, and I think about, I mean, I started my career as a high school English teacher, and, you know, I think it's, I think grade teachers have been doing this work forever, but it's probably not been documented and talked about in precisely the same way. So part of the challenge, and I guess this is, comes right up to the board level, is how do we do this in a way that isn't now adding two more full-time jobs onto everybody's responsibility to develop every rubric and to observe every child and to, right? So part of it is this reality check about what is our system's capacity, and as a governing body, let's be smart about what we're asking for, because, you know, this is not the only task we have in front of us, right? Day to day, we have hundreds of students coming in whose lives we take care of. So I, while I feel like my role tonight is to try to push the detail of it, I certainly don't wanna leave feeling like, okay, well, I've dropped all this stuff on you, and you know, you've gotta have developed all of these documents in X period of time to really accomplish your work. It's obviously gonna be a process to get there. My thought was to try to put in front of you some good examples.
I think, I mean, I think that what you've done by providing us some artifacts, and, you know, we can always go out and hunt on the internet, but I think it's nice to have the connection to what you're saying. And again, as Martin kind of alluded to, you know, when we look at our own personal development in the six areas, and then look at, you know, the, kind of the rubrics that correspond, it, I think there's always a worry that you're going it alone a little bit, and so it's nice to have some benchmarking and conversation around how others are doing it. And that, to me, is a really important value, you know, to the work and you joining us. That's a big, big part of our work, is that, you know, are we going about this the right way? What other questions should we be asking? What questions should we be asking of, you know, the superintendent or the staff that are associated? How do we know we're actually progressing? How do we know that our budget's supporting? You know, I think it's all of those questions, particularly around the policy governance, which is, you know, driving our ends, right, where we want kids to, you know, what we want them to be able to do by the time they graduate. So.
I guess, I would, going to the personal learning plan, I mean, what I would like to see that the school's doing, but this isn't something we're necessarily monitoring, is that the students, by the time they've gone to seventh grade, through teacher, through student, through parent input, knows where the kid is on each, on these rubrics for each of the, you know, one through six, you know, that this particular child exceeds in developing awareness. But it's little evidence that, living responsibly. So when they get to the personal learning plan, that can feed into that. And I would hope that our whole endeavor of trying to have the ends monitored and have teaching to the ends will get people to that point. And still, you know, that's at an individual student level, but that should also rise up to the general broad-based, how are we doing on each of these ends? And if we see that, you know, there's little evidence that we're meeting number five, then we need to talk about whether we have to modify number five or whether we have to modify what we're doing to reach there.
So that's a good point. So, I mean, what kind of assurances through policy governance? Number one, the board, let's say, gets a report that X percent are exceeding X percent or whatever, but when we monitor, when we provide the board the feedback, you'd like to know that we've reached out and made those connections with, you know, with parents and the students and that they, in fact, know. So that's a different grain size.
Right.
And there's articulation in that reporting, so I think that, to me, poses a good question. Martin, an individual board member, I think articulates how the data would be reported up, but there's some articulation that's also needed around to what level it's needed and available at the lowest level, the parent, the student and the parent level. So I'm wondering, I'm interested in how others are doing that, like for this instance. Does every student, in this case at Montpelier, do they know where they stand? Do the parents have an opportunity in some sort of a systematized way where they know where their child is, whether it's through conferencing or whatever? You know, that's a question.
I don't know the answer to that question. I think it's the right question to ask, though.
Do you, you have thoughts, Stuart? I know that we've been around this a few times.
But we talked, we talked about, do report cards have to be modified to reflect ends?
And we know that.
And we're working on those pieces. But again, it's still the question, I mean, do every single one of these ends have a separate place in the report card besides all the other information that's there now? You know, in other words, how do you report to parents out at one level when their personal learning plan is developed in seventh grade? Parents have to approve that, so pulling from these things into the personal learning plan, you know, is report out to parents in seventh grade. But the question of every end being reported on a report card, plus, you know, your handwriting and how you're doing in PE, some of these, which we will be able to fold in, because they're natural pieces. In other words, we can change some of the things we say now for PE and put in some of these personal development pieces. Some are more natural fits than others. Or the same thing, I mean, you know, like you say, effective time management and organizational skills, we can directly address that, I think, very easily in a reporting system. Confidence, resiliency and adaptability may be a little harder.
So my, my specific point is, for assurance to the board.
Right.
We can give the higher level who exceeds and where those percentages are by kind of, by grade, by school, by whichever way, you know, again, how that rolls up. But I mean, I'm, still, like, the assurances to the, that we have report cards that articulate that. We have, and that's where this data all comes from. Would that satisfy the board's monitoring in this level that?
Well, maybe the data comes from the PLPs, you know, on a, I'm assuming that'll be on a yearly basis, right? A meeting on a yearly basis with parents and students and whoever else is in that meeting. And it seems like in that kind of meeting, it wouldn't be very hard to document where the kid is.
You mean like a summary of PLPs?
Right.
See, I'm trying to, you know, for the board level, what would, what would you receive that would, I get that we can give you the percentages and where they are on the rubric, but what would you need or what are others doing to assure that the, under policy governance, the boards get the assurance that report cards or information's being shared, to Martin's point?
Well, I guess, I mean, the question is whether, as I'm understanding from Stuart as well, is whether we measure each of these six, twelve, eighteen, twenty-five different things that we have here. Do we, do we measure each of those at the granular level of each individual student? We don't need to know that. We just need to know how we're doing with our, how many students do we have now? Two thousand?
Twenty-four hundred.
Twenty-four, twenty-five hundred. How we're doing with all twenty-five hundred students. But we know that that is brought up from an individual analysis of those twenty-five different guidelines that we have for each individual student. You know, so that's kind of one question. The other question is, I mean, are there some that we can just take at a higher level? Like the being proud of our shared experience and having fun along the way? Are there any of those? It seems to me that we have a fundamental question of what the board expects the administration to measure on an individual basis.
Well, and I think, yeah, I think you're right, because I think when we developed these, I think there was an expectation that metrics would be at the granularity of the numbered levels. I think we're open to recommendations of areas that might be combined or recommendations of appropriate grade level assessment. For instance, maybe, you know, maybe numbers one and four on personal development are evaluated only in grades, you know, three and eight, and then others are evaluated at other grade levels. So there's sort of a rolling picture. But I, you know, that's certainly not a level the board's gonna get involved in, but I think, to your point, David, it, I think we're looking for a recommendation. I think we're looking for an understanding that there are rubrics, whatever those look like, there's appropriate grade level check-ins, and that the communications with students and parents happens, you know, when we, when we look at that twenty-five hundred student population, we, we know that there, you know, that ninety, well, I mean, we'd shoot for a hundred percent.
Aware of.
Would have been, you know, had the review at the level of the student, parent and guardian. And I think, you know, I think about, as you're talking about this, I think about the data walls at the elementary level, because I think that's a little bit of the framework where you have team input, and some of the, they may be a little bit softer, but team input on a rubric around resiliency and adaptability seems to be, it would be an appropriate assessment at certain grade levels, even, even on just exceeding or meeting or, you know, performing below standard or something. That may be very appropriate. So we've got a lot of mechanisms in place, which I think the board has always understood. We just don't know how they fit together to kind of get to a top-level assurance that we are monitoring and delivering on our commitment there.
Just two real quick comments on it. One is the concept of, like, looking at third grade and eighth grade, just my experience with the kneecap, I wouldn't wanna do that, because then if there are differences that this particular year, we're not, we're not meeting for this, well, it's the cohort.
Yeah.
And that doesn't, we can't track how we're doing. You know, we can't see the growth of individual cohorts until we, you know, hit eighth grade and find out how they've done the past five years. So I don't think that works. And I can't remember what my second point was.
Well, the data, the data walls are interesting, because again, they are, it's rich with conversation, and it's particularly, it's got some academically-driven conversation, but in, it's, there's also, all these other areas are very much connected based on the way in which the student approaches, you know, their work, how they respond, how they collab, you know? It touches upon our other ends, for sure. So, you know, that's a good conversation whereby which probably a lot of information can be collected when those meetings, when those gatherings are happening.
And I remember my second point real quick. Is that, I mean, from my experience, and this is getting into the weeds, which we're not supposed to do, as court members and such, but I, from my experience in knowing the teachers, at least at the elementary level, and with the team approach in middle school, I don't know as much about the high school, is by the end of a year or even halfway through a year.
I know.
With these kind of rubrics.
I know.
A teacher could go through it and be able to place a kid pretty effectively on rubrics, on twenty-five different categories.
Absolutely.
I agree.
In five minutes.
They really are, we have very good teachers.
High fidelity.
And they know their kids very well. You know, their students. So I tend to think, I mean, I mean, rather than approaching this in a minimalist approach and trying to, to get as much data from, I won't say doing as little as possible, but not adding the two new individuals, I mean, I'd like to see what it would take to really robustly measure how we're doing on all these. And if we find out it's too much, and people are just faxing in their observations because it's too much, well, then let's adjust them.
And we have a lot of the data. We have a lot, you know, we have a lot of that, and we've made up the rubrics and.
We have rubrics, not for every single element, but, you know, we have chosen particular ones as teachers, you know, and again, we use random samples, not every teacher, you know, every kid all the time. And, you know, I mean, there's a lot of academic pressure that makes it very hard. I'm not saying the teachers couldn't, but it's a volume of work. If you had a rubric and you were assessing all of your hundred kids in a middle school team or eighty-five kids in a middle school team on every single one of these pieces, which isn't to say that it can't be done, it would be a very big shift of culture.
Part of our, go ahead.
So right now, you know, I haven't seen an elementary school report card in a long time, but some of the, you know, the indicators, could they be matched up with some of these items that are reported out on?
That's what we do.
Exactly right.
But I mean, so that you could actually, like, if for one indicator, you would say it's 1.3.4, and then you could pull the data that says what percentage of students meant, met 1.2.3.4 or whatever, in all of these.
Yep.
And I think that's, you know, a bit of what I was saying, is a combination of what we're doing already. I also think, you know, I mean, I think you're getting a little bit of feedback around, there are concerns about the appropriate grade level side of it, concerns about subjectivity as well, workload issues. But I think there's also, and one concern I would express would be, to Martin, to your comment, I mean, I, it may be a combination of workload, but although I think many of our teachers could go through that twenty-eight point assessment or whatever it is at mid-year or the end of the year on a per-student basis, that, that's also an intensive kind of thing, and I would worry about the quality of the information at the specific student level. So in some of this, all. So in some of this, almost starts to feel like it could be a little bit negotiable in, in a team meeting, for instance. So I'd also be looking for a recommendation of where is there some proxy measurement that we're, we're already doing an assessment? And, and I, I have to say, I know some of the stuff you presented, Harry from Montpelier, with the surveys, and I would have concerns about surveys too, just in terms of self-assessments or things like that. So, you know, as we're talking about it, I, I know as a board member, I'll really be looking to administration to sort of say, here's, here's our best baseline measurement of these. We're going to start here, some of it's going to come from report cards, and we'll, we'll collate the data, some's going to come from, you know, we're going to, we're going to do a pilot program of sampling at the end of the year, mid-year, with a few grades and see what that looks like. But basically, some kind of recommendation that directionally moves us forward on what, what could be a, a firmer monitoring report, basically, that, that provides those assurances.
I mean, again, the examples are, are good, and it would be interesting, I think, some takeaways of this is to say, you know, to the Montpelier and the other examples, like, you know, how, how they roll that up into the reporting process.
Yeah.
And it, I don't, I don't, you, you probably don't have that, like...
No, but I can at least do the initial follow-up on that question, because I think ultimately that is what you're looking for, right? Is some examples.
Because they've designed these rubrics to the question of the board and, and, and feedback to us on our directional pattern or where, where we go. And how, how are they, how is that rolling up for, for, for them when they are doing the monitoring report? It'd be interesting for us to know, it's likely that maybe they have every single measure all rolled up, or maybe they're, maybe they're, it'd be interesting to see how they're doing that.
Example.
I think it would also be interesting to understand whether we have any tools to assist that process. I know that one of the things we're looking at is upgrading our data system.
Oh, I see.
It would seem to me to make sense that if we're going to do it in that direction, that those tools support that reporting system, with the idea of easing the workload on the individuals that have to do. I mean, what we really want is their honest, frank opinions, as objectively stated as possible, and then just have the work disappear and just have it just magically appear in front of us, right? On a dashboard, right? I mean, that's what we'd like to be.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and ideally, we wanted to inform, you know, progressions, right? We wanted to, you as a teacher, us as a staff, we, we have this data and we are able to understand where we are and where we need to go.
I would hope that our dream for a data system would include the idea that we can address it laterally, vertically, okay? Through time, any of those things, right? So it's really a question of getting it specked out so that you can do that. I suspect the technology exists there, I just have no idea the cost of getting there, the amount of training that's required. But I think we ought to have aspirations to make this be virtually automatic, once the task is done, you know? So it's a matter of checking boxes, like Martin suggested, and the work's done, from the standpoint of reporting to the board. Now, there's another follow-up, which says somebody has to look at this data, analyze what it means, and put some actions to make the world a better world as a result of that, right? So...
Well, this is good. I don't know, Harry, we're close to eight o'clock here, which is, you know, we'd love to have you stay all night, and the board would love to stay all night, but we're trying to, again, part of our work is to stay on task too.
Of course, yeah, yeah.
But I don't know if there's other things that you wanted to share, you know, before we get to that eight o'clock timeframe?
I want to share a reflection, and then I could shortcut the materials by saying, by, at about four this afternoon, I sent you an email, both Elizabeth, you and David, an email with the links to all the documents.
Okay.
I will specifically follow up with Montpelier with respect to how they report this to the board, and if there's technology that they've...
What kind of tools they've used?
Tools they've used. So those will be my concrete follow-ups. I just wanted to offer just a reflection. I mean, I think the conversa, I mean, it was just a treat to watch the conversation take shape in that it was digging down, at the same time stepping back and recognizing what your role is here. And then, to me, the last part about, you know, how do we measure this? Ultimately, it's about individual students progressing, as opposed to taking snapshots of cohorts at, you know, probably arbitrary points along the way for the sake of, and I think it's that kind of thoughtfulness to your, you know, your monitoring responsibility that ultimately sends a message, I hope, because, you know, the classroom experience as an educator is simultaneously overwhelming and inspiring, and probably everything in between. So ultimately, how do we do this in a way that moves everybody's efforts forward, let alone ultimately the students' learning forward? So, you know, it's a treat to witness that conversation take shape. Obviously, we'll do everything we can to provide good resources and supports. The last thing I would say is I would just put a plug in for this network. As much as I haven't had people attend remotely, the reason why I'm not sitting here in front of my GoToWebinar platform is that no one registered. So I'm, I'm often frustrated that that's happening. On the other hand, I think this conversation will be accessed by people in their own time and place, and in that sense, it's a contribution. I think there are other moments in time when we can tap into each other's work, going back to what you said. I really think the best work, when you come to a human and dynamic endeavor, is when you work with other people. I remember it in the classroom, I remember it as a building administrator, you know, when you can, when teachers start talking to each other, for them, or when students start talking to each other, you know, you can't, you can't do better than that, obviously with a power, you know, a structure there too. So I'll do what I can to continue to provide resources and supports and engage you in the work of this network going forward. Thank you for the opportunity. I think at this point, I won't leave any more hard copies with you, because I think it's easier to navigate, and you're likely to find your way to other things that I didn't find in my exploration, so.
Thank you, Harry.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, we will move on to Agenda Item Seven, Master Planning and Financial Stewardship.
So the master planning, I reported earlier in announcements about our work and getting out the information, we are, I would stay still in, we're in this, I'm going to say the storming phase. There's been a whole series of options that have been presented. The last meeting, which is in part in the press release, was, you know, I think just a lot of information for, for staff, and looking at all of the, the various associated cost figures, opportunity figures. So the, the group is going to continue tomorrow night again, and will be further reviewing those options. The idea here, though, is that the, the first community meeting, to think we're going to go forward with ten options, is, is not going to be feasible. And it's likely that, based on our desired opportunities, both city and school, based on the cost bar, I'm, I'm calling it a cost bar within, you know, within an air, an area that is, is appropriate, if all of those are able to go, we're going to be able to eliminate a good number of those options. But they are being communicated. Again, this is, for people who don't know, it's, you know, the status quo, three elementary schools, middle and high, same configuration that we exactly have, and then all of, a whole litany of, of options on all kinds of different locations around the city. So we...
Well, there are these community meetings that are, are the working meetings open to the public?
All meetings, and we've had some good attendance at, we've had a few other folks just sitting and listening. And they're, they're all publicly, they're being posted, and we're keeping track of, of the information and posting up information on the city website. We, we will soon have, as a result of our, kind of our press releases, we're going to have those active as well, and when people click on them, they'll, they'll head right to the city site and they can get all of the information. So we're in that, we're in the very beginning of all of the, kind of the communication processes that need to lead us along the way for people to stay informed.
Do you have the next public meeting?
So the next public meeting is going to be, do you remember, Annette? I'm putting you on the spot now.
Which model is the task force?
Task force meeting? So, right, they're all public meetings.
The meeting will be January eighth.
Say it again.
January eighth is our...
Yeah, so that it's, the, there was a change in these meetings. Task force meeting is going to be again on the January eighth. The net, the community, first community meeting is going to be in February, and I'll have to give you that revised. We were definitely feeling the, the cramp to have data, quell down those options, get cost factors associated, so the first community meeting...
But the next task force meeting is tomorrow.
Tomorrow night.
And where is that being held?
City, city offices. Or city...
What time?
It is five to nine. Yep.
Wow. Commitment.
Yep. And again, we have a great group. Annette is here, actually, she's part of the, you know, kind of the financial data review. We're, we're working to, again, that bar that I'm talking about, where it's in the both, the, what we're going to determine, an appropriate area on taxation and cost. We want to be able to express that. It's not going to do us any good to have, you know, provide all these options, but at a, at a way out-of-bounds level of, of cost. So there's an awful lot of discussions around different land, I think it's important for people to understand that. Currently, you know, conversations about Rick Marcot School certainly is there, but it's Chamberlain as well as Orchard. In addition, Oak Creek Village has been talked about a lot, this is off of Heinsberg Road that kind of connects through the Spears, the Swiss Street Extension, although because it's the topographical mapping of that land is very, very hilly, it does not give necessarily a great footprint for a school or a larger school. There's conversations about the Wheeler property, which is right where the garden, the garden center folks have occupied in the past, ten acres of land that's for passive recreation, whether or not that land may be, be able to be flopped between the Oak Creek Village thirty acres for the ten acres. There's other identified sites around the city that are not necessarily owned by the city that might be able to be, you know, to be communicated, negotiated, et cetera. So I, I think, you know, we're, we're asking a lot of the, the right questions. Some of them are a little bit awkward, because they're not, and they're not, they're not in our, in our purview, but it's giving certainly myself and Kevin the, you know, some directional appropriateness to go and ask. The Pisagali property here, just to our north, which is the, the large warehouse, that also is an area that, at least we wanted to identify that as an option. Doesn't mean that we've entered any agreement, but is it an option? And of course, you know, they have said, yes, it's an option. It may not be an option when, 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 you know, the costs are all figured out, but nonetheless, those are also being considered, because there's discussion about, could another school be built on this property, right? In the, in the northeast corner of this property where the baseball field is, for example? And by having additional access and parking, would that make it a viable location, et cetera? So I'm giving you a really quick overview of the, of the process. Again, we've got a lot of folks working, you know, to, to kind of boil this down. So anyway, I don't know if anybody has any particular questions, thoughts, concerns? Okay.
Not at this point.
All right.
Martin, did you have one?
No, no, I just wondered, I mean, whether we should have board members at these task force meetings? Is that necessary, or it would be...
You're always invited, I think, I'm, I'm sensitive to the number of meetings that you're at. I would say at this point, we're kind of in the, my words, not theirs, we're in the storming phase a little bit. Like, what's that, and what's this, and where's, you know, a lot of the stuff, where it's located and things of that nature, demographic data, demographic, you know, outreach and progression, what is it, what are we looking like in the future? Some of that is going to be important to you. But I would say, certainly welcome at any time, but I might say, as we progress a little bit further, it may be of more value for you to, to be at those, you know, those meetings in the future.
I mean, it sounds like you have a very good group of people working.
Yeah, and again, Kevin and I, and, and other, other folks that are supporting it are definitely, are there, supporting the process and making sure information is available to the folks. Lot of really, really good questions that are coming up. And we've got, I would say, city and school folks, you know, we've got some teachers there, we've got, you know, the Chuck Hafters, the Bruce Jattmans, and again, you've seen some of those names that are asking an awful lot of questions, I think, that are really, really ripe and good.
I guess that the main thing is that, I, through this process, presumably at the end of this process, the board is going to have a pretty big decision to make.
Correct.
And I want to make sure that, that we understand how we got to that recommendation, rather than just being presented with it and having to say yes or no. I mean, I think we need to really understand.
Yeah, and I think it's equally, equally the same for the council, and so I, I, I think that's an important point around kind of the, the roadmap, if you will, and what are we trying to accomplish in each one. Frank Locker, the, our consultant who's running this, along with Kevin and I, can certainly give a little, maybe a better snapshot of the, here we are, here's how we're progressing, here's what we're trying to ensure is provided. And, and again, maybe you folks can come into play and, and offer up opinion, maybe that's where some thoughts might need to be discussed.
Other questions, comments? All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Eight, Superintendent's Report.
So, there's only one item on here?
Yeah. It's a little one.
Oh, isn't that funny, huh? So we, we are, as you know, we, we, and again, I want to say we, I better be careful. John and his staff have been working hard to upload and, and put in place what we are going to call our, kind of our baseline or our preliminary budget. And it's not just rolling things over, it's also we've, we've included some things. And so we want to, we want to, you know, just kind of walk you through a bunch of things. We know we have about an hour or so to do this. We want to leave some time along the way for the board to ask questions as we go. I would love for the opportunity to receive feedback from the board tonight as to, to what you're thinking. I think you're all well aware now that, you know, administratively, school by school, we've outlined kind of our directional progression, you know, out to two, twenty-twenty, and that's primarily what's driven a lot of the, the components. I will tell you that I'm, as a result of the master planning and visioning work, the long-range demographic data, student enrollment data, I have not yet put in. That will be a driving component around the, the resource allocation at, at the, each, at each individual school. We've had one, actually, one, in some cases, two meetings with our administrators, building administrators, individually with central office staff, looking at where they are at and what they're, what they're in need of. So we've inputted some of that data, and we're, we're going to continue that as we move forward. So this, as you know, between right now and January twenty-second, is a very busy time for us around pulling all of this information together. In addition, it doesn't all come to us, like, it's not all dependent upon us, it's also dependent upon the state providing us with information, of which we still don't have all of that. So anyway, without further ado, we're going to walk you through some of this, and John, I think we're going to start with the handouts here that we have, correct?
That's right. It says two thousand and sixteen preliminary and pricy's baseline budget. And page one, this summary here is, is really, really brief at the highest level, but the change in the budget, preliminary baseline budget, once again, not the recommended budget, but is a three-point seven percent increase. And you can see the categories, we'll, we'll get into everything a lot deeper as we go. But the, the two categories are the draw from the state head fund, and you can say that's property taxes and everything else that goes in the head fund, and then other revenues. They're called local, because at the state level, it's everything else, it's federal, tuition, that kind of thing. Our salaries and wages are employee benefits, operating costs, and debt service. If we continued on with the same staff, with the same, and then apply the contracts that have been settled, the, we have a little bit of allowance for turnover in there, and you can see those, those amounts that change. Salaries and wages up three point three-nine percent, employee benefits two point six-six, operating costs six point seven-seven, and debt service continues to go down at a slight rate.
John, I'm a little surprised that the employee benefits are at two six-six. Some of the numbers we've heard about somebody else.
Yeah, we'll get into it, the details. It's, it's really great, actually. Now, I, I thought we'd go to the budget workshop second. Now, I, I thought we'd go to the budget workshop second, so you could see, see what our spending is, because that's where the decision we can make are, and then in the budget workshop, which we've used for a number of, number of years now. Try to get it all on just a tablet. Okay, so we've, we've numbered this number three. Last week, we had two other budget workshops, so this will, will make their sequential, so we all know where they are. But these numbers that you just saw, the forty five million, three ninety eight, which was an increase of three point seven, is what it says recommended. It's preliminary baseline budget. And then the local revenue is, is here, nine, nine million, eight hundred thirty three thousand dollars. You subtract that and that becomes what is called the draw from the education fund. Then we had our preliminary number of equalized pupils given to us on December third. There's a final number that's coming on Friday, and we have to make a decision tonight about pre-kindergarten, which will affect our final number. So we'll get to that a little later. The act sixty eight per pupil cost would be fifteen thousand, one seventy with this budget mix and revenue, local, local revenue, which translates into a residential tax rate of a dollar, one point six four three oh, which is a three point two six increase and a two percent change from the previous year. The non-residential tax rate at the state level is up two cents, and it's applied to our common level of appraisal, and it's, it's up just over two cents so far. Over on the right side, the state level factors, this was in the letter from the state tax commissioner. The base education amount is increased by statute to nine thousand, four hundred fifty nine dollars. The common level of appraisal is, we had, we don't know that number yet. So it's pretty close to where it had been in, in this example. The residential rate and the non-residential rate were given to us as suggestions by the state tax commissioner, and once again, that's by statute. The legislature will approve that or change it in the upcoming session. So a couple other things to note, the average tax or average assessed value on a home in South Burlington has increased by about four thousand dollars. So our examples issued with the city too will be rounded to three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and a condominium is two hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. So in this case, for a hundred thousand dollars of value, the taxes would be up thirty three dollars. And on that typical home, it'd be a hundred and eight dollars, and a condominium would be seventy three dollars. And once again, these are, this is preliminary baseline, this is not the budget, but I want you to see what the effect would be. While we're here, if, knowing all these factors, what would it take to get no tax increase? So if we type in seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Oh, put the negative in there. That's the level of, of spending would be to get to no tax increase. So it'd be a two point oh nine percent increase in operating expenses.
At the current factors, right?
Right, with these revenues and, and.
Did that adjust your numbers?
Sure did. All these are zero.
Oh, gotcha there.
Yeah, it doesn't adjust the non-residential because it, that won't change. That doesn't, isn't affected by anything. I'm going to take that seven fifteen out of there for a second and just go down to this box. At this point, the, with an equalized pupil cost of fifteen thousand, one seventy, the excess threshold, spending threshold has been calculated seventeen, one oh three, so we're, we'd be about two thousand dollars less than that.
That's better than we were last year, wasn't it?
Yes, we were, we were nine hundred dollars. So, you know, one of the, one of the observations I have, and you can kind of see this, with the recommendation of a two cent tax increase at the state level and the base education amount going up by the CPI, the state factors, it's not, it's not a factor like it had been in prior years. Where with last year, we, we had sixty eight percent of our increase was due to the state tax going up and the base education amount being held constant or, or, or slight increase. So, so that's changed. I think more the responsibility is here this year.
And I guess you said you're going to talk a bit more about some of the line items, like the local revenue?
Yeah, we're going to go through them all and then, yeah.
So, John, when you, when you summarize what this scenario shows in terms of local spending increase, because that seems to be what's getting a lot of press, what is the percentage there?
Look, three point seven.
And that's the seven hundred fifteen thousand?
No, it's up here. It's one.
Oh, the one point six million?
Yes.
Okay.
The state tax commissioner, at least their, their observation was that statewide would be three point oh nine, so. All right, any questions here? Okay, we'll go to the revenues and they're, the federal revenue is up this year because we've had some carryover in IDA funds and also title funds that, that are available to use this year. And so that's why they're up in Medicaid funds, because of the way we process those claims and take care of that, they're up too. So, so in, in the federal funds, we have about sixteen percent more than we thought we did last year. They're a little bit tricky sometimes, but I'm, I'm pretty sure about these numbers. State education, the special ed funds are going to be pretty, pretty level here. I mean, it's, it's three percent, but there's a lot of money, a lot invested in special education. The one part that went down is some of our, our students who needed some real intensive care and maybe off-site tuition, that kind of thing, we won't, we don't have them. They've graduated, moved on, so that will reduce this reimbursement. But you'll see when we get to the expense side that their, the expenses are down considerably The other state funds are pretty, pretty equal to what we had last year. Some of the numbers are given to us directly by the state or the feds, and a few of these, the smaller ones, we estimate, estimate, but. And other grants, the big picture, they, they get grants every year, and the twenty thousand may grow, but at this point, that's what we, we know that they have. And then the local funds, the, the change there is our tuition from other districts. And there's a letter that accompanies this, but we'll, we'll get to that soon. The big increase in Georgia students, the freshman year, last year of forty kids, is highly driving this number. Our, our tuition for, from districts that don't have high schools is one million, eight hundred twenty seven thousand. That's what we estimate for next year. We've looked at, there's twenty kids that are graduating, ten from Grand Al, Supervisor Union up there, and ten from Georgia. So we've, we've talked with our guidance person who does the, coordinates the programs, and she's pretty confident that we'll make those up. But I've, we, we put an allowance in there that there may be some kids that don't come, and the numbers would be changed. That requ, once again, there's seventy four thousand dollars from school choice, school choice agreements that are, I guess, sunsetting this year. And.
And where's that at?
That's all in this tuition from other districts.
Okay.
I have it on a accompanying letter, I've broken it all out. And then two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars is for excess costs associated with special needs programs for districts that aren't, or kids who come from other districts. And that's a really, you know, estimates, like interest estimate, well, I can do that, but who knows what the Federal Reserve will do six months from now? It's a conservative estimate. But these reimbursements from, from the other districts, it's pretty sure you have a number of kids coming. I know kids change their mind and that kind of thing, but these are pretty, pretty sure. The last thing that's significant in local revenues is carryover, and we reported that in the preliminary. The audit will be out in, in, in January, so they indicated that that was a good number or a little less, or there would be a little more carryover. So at this point, that's the best number we have. So if, if our spending level is forty five million, nine hundred thirty eight thousand dollars, and this is our revenue from other sources besides state property taxes, you just net those, and that's where the thirty six, one oh four comes in. Any questions there?
Will we get copies of these, John?
Yes, they'll be, they'll be electronic tomorrow, and you have them to death tonight, I guess.
Thanks.
This, this table might be a little premature, but we, this is what we've been using for a while and developed. This is, this is our, our recent history of votes back to two thousand and seven. And this two thousand and sixteen baseline budget would be three point seven percent increase compared to our average of three point two eight. The taxes would go up two point oh two percent as opposed to our average at two point six six. So once again, this is a baseline and it's not the final, so it's just to give us a frame of reference where we are.
So, John, in this context, there, we looked here at the residential tax rate essentially.
Yes.
And I don't know if you had a chance to look at the note I sent you earlier today, but my look at and understanding of Commissioner Pearson's letter is that there is a very big increase in the tax rate for income sensitized people. And the other issue is that there's a widening gap in South Burlington, at least, between what at least the twelve, three numbers showed for the dip, the increase, the gap between the residential tax rate and the non-residential tax rate. It's an increasing, the residential one's getting growing faster than the non-residential one, again. Sorry, and I know, and I know there are citizens out there that are quite concerned about that, so they, they just think that's fundamentally wrong. I mean, you can have your own opinion about it, but I know there are people out there, and I'm thinking of that in the, those in the context of people who are going to be sensitive to the budget this time around, who may not have been so sensitive to it in the past.
Yes, yes. Yeah, that, when, when we're at this point, it's hard to distinguish what that income sensitivity will be on a person-by-person basis, but that's certainly something to think about. More people will be engaged in the process, so thank you. We'll go on to the object code list, and can you see it in the back? Do you have a copy of it too? Well, salaries and wages, there's a whole bunch of categories of salaries and wages, so I've been looking at them too long, so let's, we'll just go through them. Teachers, overall, it's a change of two point two three. And if we go back to the settlement, the, what they call new money on a cohort from a year ago was two point seven percent. But the mix of teachers changes, and we've allocated, we've estimated a number of maybe retirements and have that in this number to start with, because we want to get this as accurate as possible and not overstate cost. So we've, we, we think that, we don't know who's going to retire yet at all, in fact, but we, we think that there might be seven changes. And a teacher goes out at a high rate, a new teacher comes in at maybe the bachelor, third level, fourth level, that kind of thing. So we, we came up with a formula, and it's about a hundred and forty thousand dollars less than what the, the cost would be if nobody changed. That's important too, because we have, you'll see it later, we now, for every new teacher that comes in, the district has to contribute one thousand ninety seven dollars to the Vermont State Retirement System. So we have to do these estimates anyways. Co-curricular salaries are up seven percent. There is, the base is tied to the, the, the starting level of teacher salary, but there's been a few changes, additions to the co-curricular salaries. The sophomore advisories were added there. And in this, in the middle school, there's a new activities coordinator, I think the title is. So that's one reason it's above the, what you might expect there. Administrator salaries, there are some salaries that are, administrators are in a union and, and some that aren't, so this is, we project about two point seven percent increase there. The supervisor line is one of these deals where, one of these situations, I mean, where it's up twelve percent. We have an employee who was, the mentoring program last year was added to the budget in contractual services, and it's really an employee, so we moved it there, and that's the reason for that change.
John, can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
That thousand dollars that you're forecasting you're going to have to pay for each new employee, is that, is that reflected here somewhere?
We have it, we have it actually in a contingency, it's in a, actually Dan, in a couple of years ago, in the citizens group, said, set up an exposures bin, so it's in, in our contingency.
Okay.
That's where that is.
Thanks.
It's an every-year expense too, for everyone who comes on, so it's.
Right.
We talked about that compounding.
It'll, it'll show up in benefits, I think.
Okay.
As we get into it, yeah, but for this year, that's where it is.
Okay.
Paraprofessionals had a contract increase this last year in library media assistance, and this change is kind of a one-time deal where the base rate, the steps got leveled out over a number of years, so that's why that's up. The next two categories are recess and lunchroom aides. There just are more, there are more people performing these roles. In the middle school, the principal used to do that, and now there's lunchroom aides. I know in some of the, in, in the elementary schools, we've had, had some effort there because of just how many kids are out there on recess. And acknowledge it in the budget, because some of the people that do that are also signed to special education, and you, they would get reimbursed state funds, but if they're doing general work, they don't. So those are a couple of things there. I think one thing that's, one thing, this is based on history, paraprofessional substitutes, that, that's grown, and we've, we've lagged in budgeting this. substitutes, that, um, that's grown, and we've, we've lagged in budgeting this. Uh, seven, eight years ago, there was, we were only spending forty thousand dollars a year on this area, but, um, kids were going without substitutes, so that policy went into effect. And this is also for sick and education and that kind of thing, so it's grown to a pretty, pretty significant cost.
So, a couple of questions about that. So, are you saying that part of this rise isn't necessarily that there are more paraeducators who are going out sick, rather it is a decision to bring in substitutes more often if a paraeducator is sick? That's part of it?
That's part of it. Part of it's-
Part of it's out, part of it's making sure we have subs.
Two, both.
Right, and, and I guess the other, is it a reflection, do we have more paraeducators now?
We've added a few, yes, and we'll get, we'll have to get that number for you, yeah.
Okay, so there's more paraeducators who could go out sick, I mean. Um, I guess the, the last item is, I recall that, and this goes to your next issue, or the next, the substitute teachers-
Mm-hmm.
... as well. I know that a couple of years ago, we asked to-
To hold that.
-to hold a, a figure there, and I don't know that we ever really found out how that worked out and whether, whether we were able to stay within that-
We weren't.
... budget, or, okay.
Well, it, just because this is based on actuals, when, when we did the, this new projection for this year, it, it didn't mean-
We, we-
There were, there was always efforts made. I, I know that there are education requests or conferences rejected because they're during schooltime, and it's a conscious effort, people are more aware of that, but, um-
There's a variety of reasons that go in, you know, that could have gone into the subs, uh, the, that substitute line, and in some ways, you know, I think we need to continue to study kind of our, uh, health-related, uh, issues associated with that as well. And so, um, I think this will be important for us to communicate as we continue the contractual conversations. Um, I mean, I, I'd like to say I can reduce that, it's so much, there's so many factors at play, um, with families, with, with our employees, with families, um, et cetera, and so it has, um, again, I, I don't, I can't necessarily put my, my finger on it exactly, and certainly it's very difficult to forecast.
Mm-hmm.
So, we, we do have a series of stop-cap measures that we've put in place, and I think that's had an effect, obviously, not enough.
Yeah.
You know, it's rising.
Um, yes, that's substitute teachers, and in the business office, we, we've been talking about and put some funding in here for, uh, another position or a part of a position, just to discuss that. We haven't added really any positions around that have been requested by other teachers, but this, this is in here because it's been the subject of scrutiny by the auditors, and, um, so-
It's also been a lot, we, we recognize capacity issues, particularly with things that, you know, that have been flow, so, um, and we can talk more about some of these specific ins and outs, uh, that we, that we have here.
The maintenance is within line, and then custodians, uh, in negotiations, we, we, we heard that some of the custodians are really getting burnt out because they were working six days or five days in a row and then coming in for a long event over the weekend or, um, building checks and, um, never getting a break from, from this, from the district. So, um, there are two part-time positions in, in the custodial line that are, have just gone into effect actually this year, which carryover, um, that will primarily work weekends and take that, take that often.
And I, I mean, it's important to note, too, you know, we have offsetting, we have building rental that comes in often for the duties in which they support, and so there's an offset there for the services that they provide on those weekends, you know, when our buildings are, not necessarily just the weekends, evenings, weekends, et cetera, when school's not in session.
But I, I guess I also thought there was supposed to be an offset by not having to pay overtime for the custodians who are coming in there on the sixth day, so I, I would have thought-
That's right.
... that this would not have been such an increase because of the two additional individuals, because you're not paying them overtime.
Well, it's not all, it's not all just those two. We, we, once again, we settled that, um, um, step problem in here. It's, this includes everything.
Okay, for the custodians as well, that's right.
But, and, and you're right, we were, we're, in the next line, the next line, building security, that's where that's down, twelve point two six percent.
Okay.
So, we're, we're working on that, yes.
Got you, got you, okay.
That wasn't lost.
But, so, but I think, to clarify, probably the majority of that six point zero nine percent is because of what we did with the, those salary schedule and smoothing out the increases. It's not because of the hiring of the two part-time people.
Right, it's, it's, we should, we'll, we'll figure out what the difference is, yeah, 'cause it, yeah, well, well distributed, I mean. Long-term substitutes are, you know, some years, it's, it's up and down, so this is one thing we could, we're, we're, we have to guess at a little bit, but, um, I'm, I usually don't guess low, that's, I guess, to say, it's a conservative.
It's a hard thing, our cohort, our cohort of our staff, I mean, there's, there's probably a better, better way to do the, do this.
If you, I mean, if you look at, I'm just kind of looking at all the substitute lines, the para, the substitute teacher, long-term substitute, and that's up about a hundred grand over the budget.
Mm-hmm.
So, that is a little bit of a red flag to me, and I'm a little confused, John, on your columns, is one of these forecasted?
Yes, the two thousand and sixteen baseline is forecasted compared to the-
Well, no, that's, that's a proposed budget, right?
This is not proposed, no, it's a baseline budget. In other words, it's preliminary tonight to discuss where we'd be if we keep going.
And what's the, how, what's the difference between approved and revised?
Those are the prior year. In other words, when we first came, when we first did the budget in two thousand and fifteen, we had contracts that weren't settled yet. So, there was some, some money set aside for contract settlements and contingency.
And do we have a two thousand and fifteen forecast then, versus a budget?
I see what you're saying. Um, I had, no, I don't, I don't have that yet.
So, we don't have a forecasted finish, like, on the twenty-six, seven revised budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and then, um, bus drivers, uh, there has just been a huge usage for bus drivers, use of bus drivers, um, in, in every situation, there athletics, special education runs, um, field trips, and that all, that all shows up here.
You still can't hear my kids up like that.
I know, you're still working on it. So, so overall, that's what makes up the three point three nine percent, um, salaries and wages total. And, and benefits, the, um, health insurance, um, you know, our, our increase, premium increase was four and a half percent. And then employees across the board, anybody who has insurance paying one, is going to pay in one more percent of the premium. Um, and then we have people who take buyouts, so it doesn't, it's pretty constant. Um, and here, this reflects a mix of the employees that we have as to what options they have, single, uh, family or, or, um, I think, or two persons, yeah. So, um, I, I, there's one area in here that I don't, um, don't have the answer for, disability insurance, I, I saw that, and I, I didn't, didn't find out, so I will, I'll find that out, but, um-
Is the, is the, um, buyout, is buyout in a separate line here, John?
No, it's in, it's mixed in there.
It's mixed in.
And this is everybody's, teachers, um, support staff, administrators who are involved too. Employee retirement, I did a, a breakout of that. Um, uh, support staff pension plan, that's, um, it's up by twenty-nine thousand dollars. We, we have had a new minimum contribution of five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, and the, the board, um, made a decision a few years back to fund more than that. So this budget includes a hundred thousand dollars more than the minimum contribution. It also includes twenty thousand dollars for the new, uh, four percent contribution to support staff, uh, four oh three B, for people who were hired after September twelfth, two thousand and thirteen. And then, if, the rest of it's eighty thousand dollars for the district's matching contribution of two percent, um, uh, to existing support staff employees. The line above that is, um, for two administrators who have retired from the S, the Administrators' Association, and, um, we're kind of nearing the end of that liability, so.
Do we have one left?
Two. There are two people being paid right now.
Right, but then we have one potential-
There'll be one additional after that.
Okay.
That person's in their mid-forties, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's, that's health benefits, employee benefits, I mean. Purchased services, I went through this line by line, and it, it, um, there's nothing really significant to report on this, it's, uh, a lot of it's grant, um, grant work, and, um, it didn't, it, it went down slightly. We moved around, and this is, um, legal services and negotiations kind of go hand-in-hand, um, and negotiations, we, we think will be of the low E V this year, so that's gone down. Um, there's some equipment repair and maintenance for our schools that our cust, head custodian noted, and we're going to take care of that, so that's what the increase is here, about fifteen thousand dollars. And preschool expenses, um, that's pre-K, which we can, I think we need to talk about that at the end?
We do.
Is that okay?
Under one six six, yeah.
Okay.
We don't want you to forget that, I mean, that's a, that's a big number, but we need to talk about specifics.
The, um, the next area is our, our property services. The, the biggest thing here is, our biggest number here is our plant repair services, and those are our facilities projects, um, and we just have more this year than we did before, in the prior year. Uh, there's, that's probably not too readable, but, um, there's a listing of everything that we've, um, think is important for next year in, in with your, your paper, paperwork, so, um, we'll be going through that a lot the next meeting because the, um, there's some decisions that have to be made with the elevator and the associated work at the high school that, um, you need to get some advanced information about, but this, this hundred, or, go back to the other screen, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars is, um, are projects that are coming out of the general fund, the bond is coming out of, uh, capital projects fund separately. That's the biggest, uh, area here. Our, our insurances have been pretty stable for, um, a number of years, but, um, we've seen an increase in the last two, so we, they're up about ten percent. And then other purchase services, um, the big line here is down seven hundred and thirty-one percent, I'm sorry, seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars, down thirty-one percent, and that's tuition to other, other institutions, other schools for kids in, in, with their I E Ps, so, um, we saw a drop in some of the reimbursements from the state, and this is why there's a, there's a big drop in the cost of that for, for kids, so. This all, special education funds come from a service plan, it's done every year, and has to be filed with the state by the end of October, so that's where all our costs for special ed come, are, are tabulated. The next line is other tuition, school choice, should be zero, um, that's just a little contingent line in case there are kids that sometimes go back and forth between schools, and that's the only reason that's there, kind of contingency. And everything else is pretty, pretty much the same.
So, John, will there be a line item in here for dual option for the future?
Dual enrollment.
So, you're, yeah, dual enrollment for the, you know, what you forecasted?
It's, it's in this, it's in this tuition line right now.
Okay.
Um, that's something that we talked about last time and really hasn't changed, we don't think that there's be a lot of kids using it, so there's a, there's a small amount in this line. And then, uh, supplies and materials, um, ground supplies is something that's worth noting, it's up twenty thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, we have, all our playgrounds really need to be taken care of with bark mulch and monitored pretty closely. We had inspection done on our new playground at Central, which passed well, and the mulch was there, is brand new, but we need to do, keep that up. We've been doing that with our custodial supervisor who's been working, kind of volunteering his time at night in the summer, and we have to, we have to do a better job with that, either, either schedule it better with our own people or, um, or hire somebody out.
Yeah, I mean, this, you can get into all kinds of details, it's all compaction, absorbability, and again, there's new rules that, you know, based on certain height of apparatus, you have to have so many inches of cushioning or of, of, um, bark mulch, which allows for cushion, and so there's all kinds of rules that we need to be paying attention to around for that, you know, from a liability, safety and liability perspective.
And then, um, software and maintenance agreements, there's, this is, um, the change is seventy thousand dollars. It's not the whole cost of a new student information system and/or a, an accounting human resources system, but it's money to start the process. And we're, we've committed to do both, but practically speaking, it looks like the Student Information Center will be first in sequence. Um, the accounting system can wait a year, we have a real need for better human resources software, but the accounting system that goes with it probably should wait a year because the state is adopting a standardized chart of accounts for all, all the districts, and, uh, we might be a year ahead of, of thinking about that, but, um, we don't know, we need to obviously do an R F P for the student information system and gather data, and maybe Stuart, can you talk about it a little bit?
Well, it's just, I mean, we talked a little bit about this before, but Schoolmaster is a program that is really inaccessible to administrators and teachers. When they need any kind of report, really, our data person has to sit down and do it because reports are very unintuitive. And what that means is we have a lot of data that's hard to get out. The other piece is that the kind of data we want, especially when we try to monitor things like N's, our system is really made for big size, kneecap score is going easy, but if we did all those things, it, it just, it doesn't fit.
Doesn't have capacity.
So, that's just a basic, you know, I mean, I go on and on, we could tell you Schoolmaster horror stories for a long time, this, this, the basic thing is, it's an old system that's not upgraded by the people who own it now, they actually have an upgraded system that we're looking at, you know, by the same, you know, in other words, one of those things that got purchased by another company, you know, and so they don't really keep track or keep it up with what's happening out there. So, I don't want to go any much deeper than that, we, we'll talk, but we really are trying to see how to create or get in a system that would get the data at real point to the people who need it and build the kind of reports that we want to have.
And we, can you just talk about Carrie a little bit?
Well, and so we've been working, Carrie Sulis, retired curriculum director, Melanie is a very big data person, and we're using some- is a very big data person, and we're using some grant money. He's giving us twenty-seven days of, of service. He met with all the administrators as a group, meeting's small, and we're, we're really, he's, he's met with Ray, and he's really giving us a lot of advice. One, about how to use the data we have now and that we do have in our possession to make sure we're using our data well, but also ways to, you know, answer this question, he doesn't represent any particular company, but ask the question of how to get the data at our fingertips, and the right data.
Are we coordinating our assessment of whatever we're looking at with, at a minimum, the rest of Chittenden County? Because I think the, what, I know what I've seen is the financial management systems, and I think the student databases tend to be one-off decisions at the S U. or the district level, and consistent with your comment that the state's looking at a set of standardized accounts at a minimum, I would hope there's some effort to start to move toward a common system.
There is, and although, you know, it's still frustrating, some districts have made big purchases not that long ago, and so, you know, the, the idea of yet another movement is, is problematic from a cost perspective. I think, you know, the, the good thing is we're having the conversation, and that we're trying to coordinate the, the movement, and it's our, our hope that when, when anyone makes the next step, that others, as they come do, will, will align, and that's kind of our, our desire, so.
I guess I would put ourselves in that same category.
That's right.
As we make that decision.
That's right, who's, who's out there, and again, it's like with anything, though, you know, three years ago, or three years to the, to the now, is that there's systems that are available that we are far better than what might have been purchased, you know, by Chittenden.
Central.
You know, so we're trying to do this, and again, this is part of, you know, what I think the state's doing, which is in a smart way. We need to be doing this on a much larger scale, and they, we really need to be doing this. The, the one-offs, it makes it very difficult. It's one thing about reporting our own and having available data to our, you know, for, for teachers to press the button, but when we do all of our state reporting, that's cumbersome, because you gotta, you gotta look through all of the data and put it into fields in which essentially could have been simply extracted in every report, saving many, many hours and effort.
So, so have you looked at what the other, or any other districts who have recently purchased packages?
We have, and we, and that's part of, as Stuart alluded to, I mean, that's part of what we either, we're working on along with, again, Carrie Sulis, to try to make sure that we're, you know, looking at what's, what they're doing, what they're using, how it's working, et cetera.
Most, most of the districts for their S I S. are using Power Schools, Power School, which has some more power than our Schoolmaster system. Not sure it's what we really want to do. Many people are supplementing that with B C A T., which is a much more, it, it's a supplement to the, so you can get that data out quicker, and they do talk to each other in some ways, but it's too early in the process for me to say, you know, I mean, we know what other districts have, but we want to really make sure that, that we look at it, you know, holistically, because this is a big purchase, and that's why we've not run out to just go out and buy a system.
Right, and I'd say even more so with the accounting system, coordinating with what schools have purchased more recently.
Yeah, and you want to be able to have those talk to each other, right? That's important, that those talk to each other, which we haven't had.
Schoolmaster doesn't talk to anything, except Excel. I mean, we can pull things out in Excel, put it back in.
It's problematic, I mean, when you look at costs, you know, costs associated with, with outcomes, I mean, we'd love to be able to do queries in a much easier way than the way we've been doing it now, so.
I mean, one last thing on, on the accounting, human resources end. In, in our office, we're mostly satisfied with our accounting system. It's the human resources end where it really fails, and you can't handle the opposite other, so it's.
Right. And I think some of you know that from the work that we've had to do, either, you know, manually to extract things out and make that available to you in, in the recent past.
Equipment is the next line, total equipment, and, and in this line, the hundred and thirty thousand dollars is mostly in information technology. What, what we've done over the years is upgraded our servers, and we've put in the wireless system, et cetera, but the, the switches that are behind the wireless system are, are warrant, wearing out, and it's, it's a, it's a need to spend some significant money. So seventy thousand dollars of this is for those switches, and then there's, there are a couple servers that need to be replaced also in here, so we have a, our buses are in this line, our lease payments, we, we show those here, and we're, we have three buses coming on next year and two going out, so there's a little bit of increase there, too.
So, so a question about, a few years ago, when we were talking about having the laptops, it was suggested, though not promised, that we would see decreases in other costs, such as books and periodicals, supplies and such, and, and this doesn't reflect any kind of decrease. Was that just not something that was going to happen, or have we already seen that in previous years?
Well, we've, we've, we cut the operating supplies, school supplies for all the schools by twenty-five percent, and then by ten in, in, in over two years.
Okay.
So we've done it across the board, so to kind of force it a little bit. It's a, I can't see, no more TV, so. My office gets in a little bit of a panic when they see a book order, because they know that that's, we have this electronics, we have one-to-one computers.
Right, right.
So, so there has to be justification.
Right. So is that books and periodicals line, is that for licensing rights for online as well, or is that all physical books?
No, it's, it's both. We, we have a policy that when you get, when you order books, that it's also.
Electronics.
And, and some things are just electronics.
Right.
And they do, you know, require, they, they don't, if they're owned by a major textbook company, they're not actually any cheaper than the textbooks, per se, usually. They don't have as many.
Not yet.
Volume, not yet, and we're looking for those alternatives, but we have cut, and we are very selective when we purchase.
And I see your point, I mean, this is the same number there in those, those areas, so it's, it's, it's something to take a look at, too. It, it, this, the baseline gets you, gets you to a point where it says, wow. We are, if we have this level of spending, again, it's a, it's a tax increase of three percent, or whatever, two percent, or whatever it was, and so then that gets you, gets you a little bit more focused on, okay, what, what can we do? What is not essential? The last miscellaneous cost in contingency, the contingency line, I listened the other day when we had our discussion about the Orchard School, and there's two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in that for facilities. Some is being reserved for an unexpected event, and other is being, is there for the costs associated with our A D A. upgrades. For instance, the elevator at the high school, there's, there's accessibility issues around that elevator, it'd have to be solved in addition to putting the elevator in, so that's, that's what the major part of this money is.
Are the high school bathrooms in there?
They're in the bond issue, yes. We, we always put, we tend to always put money away for eighty thousand dollars for another classroom if we need it for, and that's in there. And then we have forty thousand dollars associated for exposures, associated with new federal mandates. That's the exposure bin for the seventy-six hundred dollars of payments to the state retirement fund, and also for paying benefits for long-term subs. That's new. We didn't, we didn't have to do that before, but under the Affordable Care Act, we do.
For those that are federally, are being paid out of federal ground.
Right. And then we have some money for personnel issues, which, jobs that need, need to be looked at, are they the right job for the district, or do we need something else? In our I T. department, we're, we're pretty short, short on engineers right now, and we've had trouble recruiting, so it's something we're looking at with H R. So that's where, that's what the contingency amount was. There's really nothing set aside for unsettled, auto contracts, because we're settled, which is a great place to be. And then finally, the debt service, and so there, there's a shortcut, short way of explaining how we're at, we're at forty-five million, nine hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. We're going to follow up a little bit on.
Some of these items again.
Some of these will be redundant, so I think it's time, if you go, if you, we'll go to the back page and talk about Act one sixty-six. The, the, recently, we, that was, became statewide, we've had a pre-K. program here for a number of years, that's been funded with average daily membership through the state education tax fund, and we were operating under the premise that we would operate under the state rules this year, and then around the fifteenth of November, it became optional. But I think I've figured out, through talking with other business managers in the area, and talking with the agency, a few times, I think I've figured out how it would work. And we have about fourteen new kids this year onboard, for sure, and then next year, possibly more, because we have growing kids, and there's a lot of outreach down there, so we're around two hundred and fourteen kids, but our average daily membership goes, it's a rolling average of the last two years. So under Act sixty-six, you can, if you've reached out, if you've done outreach and got new kids, you're allowed to report that, and you get credit in your equalized pupils for those, that number of students. So the fourteen new students would generate revenue of around ninety-five thousand dollars, ninety-six thousand dollars. If we, if we don't do that, then we won't get that additional ninety-six thousand dollars. I think the key point to me understanding this is, we, we've been in a, and Delina can help me a little bit with this, the group that you meet with is, is educators, districts around Chittenden County, correct?
Preschool partners.
Preschool partners.
Early learning partnership work.
Right. And so that group was ready to jump into Act one sixty-six, because it was a law, for one thing, and the, the state studied it, and they thought that the payment made to, for each kid, to each center, would go from two thousand, six hundred to three thousand dollars. Well, we've, we've operated on our own, but we really haven't because of that group. So the other districts around here are, are going to, talk to their boards and are going to, can go up to the three thousand dollar contribution, but they'll get money from the state to cover it. And the thinking was, if they stayed at twenty-six hundred dollars, when they went to negotiate fees, there's, but we have thirty separate contracts.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, that, all these centers knew what the state was going to do, and they'd say, well, what do you want to do twenty-six hundred for? We know you, you can access funds to pay us more for each student, so the general thinking around business managers has been to hop onboard with Act one sixty-six and make the change. So from a financial standpoint, that's, that's what I, I would recommend.
See, the big difference between, for us under, we, we've been a preschool partner, we've been involved in this for a good, good long time, we've built up over time, you know, as a result of good service and good outreach, growing kids South Burlington has allowed us to get to the two hundred and fourteen children, again, with the idea that, as you've heard the Secretary of Education talk about, you know, more appropriately, readying kids for, for transitions into our system. But one of the problems with, with most everybody starting that was the fact that Act sixty-two, you had to wait a period, and you couldn't start up your program, you couldn't pay out any revenue, because it was, there was a lag in the A D M., you couldn't do that. So there was all kinds of struggles and ideas, and there were options that became available to help subsidize in that first year, but most people didn't go onboard doing that. One sixty-six stops that and says, if you do it this year, you join, then you get that, you get that out-of-the-gate credit in your A D M. to allow you to start that up. So that's one change. The other part is, although we aren't totally aware of what the actual benefit is, but the state, and again, we're, I'm a little bit concerned what they're going to take over. Currently, yours truly, Delina, has spent a major, on these thirty-three partner agreements, that's been something that she has taken on, and when it went from one to two to three to now thirty-three, it's a considerable amount of time that, that she has found somewhere which she really doesn't have. It's a concern that I have around sustainability, so the state would take over the managing of these contracts under one sixty-six, those that join. We need, we, we still need to know, in a, in much more affirmed way, like, will that happen immediately? Will that be phased? What, what's going to be our obligation? But that's really the, the emphasis out of one sixty-six. I, I did say, and I think I told a lot of the board members, that, that, at the previous, we're on the fence, I, I'm not sure, you know, whether we will or we will not. I think John's right, because we have the partnerships around us, and everyone's going to the three thousand, we're in a kind of a predicament that, e- even if we don't go with one sixty, we're still probably going to need to pay the three thousand, it's, it creates a, a real, a real disjointed message that goes out to the, to the families that are, that are in the centers that we're working with, so.
Is this, I'm a little confused by this, because does this, I was under the impression that districts were going to be picking up that difference all along, so.
The three thousand, you mean?
Is the state reimbursement a temporary situation?
So the state, the reimbursement is an allocation of the average daily membership.
Right.
So for every one of our partners, our, our two hundred and fourteen students, we get average daily membership at a proration. We get point four-six of an average daily membership for all of those students, so that's, that's a, on the revenue side, which John showed you earlier. That's the money that's coming, that, that comes into, to that, that supports that work.
But what, you, you answered the question a little bit earlier, that this is a one-time increase in A D M.
Yeah.
To help.
You offset.
Offset the cost.
It's really, it's a.
So when we talk about this being an unfunded mandate, it's in the, the next year, when you get the one-time benefit.
That's right.
Of the A D M. adjustment. So are these fourteen students in our enrollment numbers?
Well, they would, they would be in our A D M., our, they would be in our equalized pupil.
Well, the fifteen, the fifteen upside.
So you roll, yeah.
The fifteen upside that we were showing on the summary, is that this group of students?
You know, back on your, your, your work seat, is what she's talking about, the equalized pupil.
Oh, oh, no, no, we didn't report at that point.
So would that increase that number by another fourteen?
I think so.
Yep.
So our total would be twenty-nine.
Twenty, whatever, yeah, whatever.
Well, but, but.
They wouldn't count them.
By point four-six, not, I mean.
That's correct, so.
They're not full, yeah.
So how much, how much, all right, so we're paying out three thousand per student on our expense side, how much are we getting additional revenue for each of those students from the state?
Say half, half of an A D M.
Which is?
Point four-seven.
Which is?
Point four-six.
We don't get to.
Which is more than what we're paying out.
Correct.
So the state has put this.
As a priority.
This moratorium on this to save on the state portion of the tax, really, you know, that's gone up to a dollar. Maybe they're thinking that they would have had to go up to a dollar one to cover.
Right. Well, again, there's, yeah, no, I think you're right, fundamentally, of course, you know, the, the secretary is very aware of, you know, the resources and dollars spent here are going to help us offset, you know, financial obligations for students to the future, is the premise, right?
I also just want to point out that those equalized pupils, that percentage, won't count this year, because our equalized pupils are on an average of three years. I thought it was a three-year. I thought it was a three-year, two-year average?
A little laggy there.
So, it'll count in subsequent years.
So, explain to me again, what was the purpose of the moratorium, then?
If they're paying out, if they're having, if the state is having to pay out four or five thousand dollars per a new pre-K student, that would put pressure on that one-dollar tax rate. I mean, is that, that's kinda what it sounds like.
So, I, I was interpreting this as being responsive to school board challenges and spending, so...
Right. As, as I had been until this conversation.
Yeah.
The only thing, the other thing I heard was that small districts, Chittenden County's kinda all in, I'm not sure every district, but mostly in, where the, the program has already been going. A lot of districts weren't ready to enroll and, you know, especially the more rural districts. And that was another, I think that's another reason for the delay.
But, but many have been on, on a not, not enroll, even though that there was fundamental support to do so based on the, the outlay of...
Sure.
To start off the program.
What changed is the big funding grant that was announced earlier this week.
Right, the thirty-three million...
Yeah. Have on this.
What is it? I forget what the name of it is.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's a good question, whether that is gonna help...
I actually assumed some of that was gonna subsidize.
I don't know that.
Okay.
And that, that's a good question. I actually sent a question around, you know, where does, where does that fit into the, to one sixty-six? Does it, is it anywhere? I mean, I know it's...
I don't think it fits in...
Well, I know it's on an umbrella. I don't, I don't know, I just don't know where it's gonna go, who's, who's gonna benefit from that at all? I don't, I don't know, is it all gonna be higher?
And I guess part of my question is, do we, do we lock ourselves out of an opportunity to compete for those dollars by committing here? I mean, what I'm hearing is the recommendations kinda go along with the Chittenden County PAC, in part because we're, we're, we've all been implementing this all along. Is that fair?
Right. That's right. I, I think if we had to negotiate separately, I'm, I've never done that, so it seems like it'd be a lot harder. We would have to maybe hire an attorney.
Are our Chittenden County boards, all boards in? Like, everyone's...
Oh, we're definitely, I mean, I, I can't with one hundred percent assurance, I think we're all kind of in the, we're in, we're in similar places right now, but what we're hearing, again, either through business managers, superintendents, we're hearing that, that everybody's kinda all in at the moment.
So, this is the recommendation to all the boards, whether all the boards accept the recommendation?
My understanding is Chittenden Central and Chittenden South are all in.
Are, are...
Yes, they're, both, both of those districts had maybe one little district that was very concerned, one board, but, yeah.
And a lot of it wasn't even for me. I, I said to John, I, I needed to see kinda the, you know, the plus minus of, you know, sixty-two and one sixty-six and, you know, this is, this is, this is the worst that John's come up with. Again, this was not easy either because John was back and forth with Brad James. We asked for, they wanted decisions, you know, I think as early as Monday, right? This, of this week or...
Oh, yeah, last week.
Or, yeah, last week. And so, we, we are in this place of, you know, Friday is, is wanting, we have another commitment, I think we need to be able to inform.
Friday about eight AM.
Yeah, that we're in, so...
Yeah, we're kind of, we're at time on this one. What, what do we need to do next here?
I think, I think we're good. We, we walked you through kinda what we're gonna, we're saying, the preliminary, you know, baseline budget. We have some things that are, are in, we're continuing to kind of, and work with the administrators. Again, part of this is what, what we know we need to be achieving. Again, you see data systems in there. That's been something that we identified in our, in our longer-range plan around data collection and supporting the work that we're trying to do, for instance. So, a lot of the stuff is in, we, we, you know, definitely, when you look at some of the, the specific pieces, we need to scrutinize and, and look, you know, probably a little bit more diligently at some of them, which we'll be doing in the time ahead.
You know, the one thing I, I always, I know I ask for it a lot, is on the, you've got the revised budget for two thousand and fifteen, but kind of a forecasted finish. And, and I would almost say, just go to the material line items, anything over two hundred grand or some, some number...
Yeah, not, not the smaller...
You could come up with it that just says, you know, yeah, we're gonna be at a hundred and one percent of that, or no, we're gonna be at ninety percent of that. So, there's some kind of targeted, I, I mean, I am anticipating a little bit of potential favorability with good controls, so that we, we know, you know, we know what the forecasted finish would look like. You know, we're halfway through the year, so we should have a pretty good idea.
Can I ask you a couple other things that I think would be helpful for us? Well, helpful for me is, I'd like to know what our ratios are, our staff and our teacher to student ratios, what this budget reflects in our numbers of pupils.
Probably at the building level.
Yeah, definitely at the building level. Yeah, and I, and as I said, I owe you, I, I kinda, that, that's a whole nother layer around staffing and allocation, enrollment projections, et cetera. I mean, we typically, as you know, we go through kind of some difficulties at the kindergarten level, but we have good, good knowledge with the others. And again, this, we're no longer in AYP and, and the choice option, so that should stop some of the volatility, you know, between schools as well around those enrollment numbers and staffing levels. We should be able to have a little bit more constant, so I get it.
Well, I mean, I think, and, and to the extent that it can go down to the, to the cohort size, because I think that that's gonna, that has been in the past and will be again, a lot of questions that we get from the community is, and I wanna be able to show that, well, we have to have three teachers for this cohort, because otherwise you're gonna have classes that have twenty-five kids instead of fourteen.
Definitely coming. I have, I've started on it, it's just not, not, not ready yet.
And now I'm gonna channel for Dan and ask about per pupil spending, what this all reflects as well, if we could have that.
Good training, Dan.
I guess, I guess the final thing, I don't know...
Nice, I can just step aside.
I don't, I don't know if this is the point to throw this out for consideration by will. Whether there's a benefit of us trying to come in at three percent or three-point-zero-nine percent increase to kind of comport with what the tax commissioner was projecting for statewide? I mean, I'm throwing that up for kind of discussion among the board, whether we should ask for that.
Just as a clarification, John, when, when the commissioner gives that three-point-zero-nine percent, is that at the gross level or at the X sixty-eight level?
Well, it's, it's mixed up sometimes, but...
Okay, nice point. Nice point, if it's at X sixty-eight, we're doing great.
Early, usually it's at the X sixty-eight level, but then when people who look at it for the first time or voters, they, they look at both. So, with the state's looking at the draw from the Ed Fund when they use a three-point percent.
Oh, well, there we go. The answer to that question, when you're at two point something, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it's a matter, it's a matter of making very clear in our communications that when, when, if you've heard that the state is expecting a three percent growth, three-point-zero-nine percent growth, what it means is the draw from the Ed Fund. You know, people may not understand what that means, draw from the Ed Fund, but we can then say, in our budget, we have a draw that's less than that, it's two point, whatever it is.
I mean, I, I, it would be helpful for, you know, I mean, I, we're, we're at time, but it would be good for me to go into this, this, this next period of time with some general guardrails from the board around, you know, what you're thinking, what, you know, you have a pulse on the community. It'd be good for me to, to have, you know, some, some additional knowledge. I, I think, you know, one of the things that we know is that our, you know, our tuition and John's alluded, you know, in the, in the data, that we have, you know, we have upticks in certain areas that are favorable, but we also know it's an increased liability. You know, we see twenty percent of those, of that revenue is, is part of that, that tuition number. So, while, while one would say, hey, that's a great place to be, what's gonna follow next year, the year after, the year after? So, I mean, I, I definitely get it from you that you gotta be careful of those increasing volatilities in that, in those areas like that. So, but, but that said, that's a positive for the district, it can't be discounted. And, you know, I, I think those are, those are examples, that's an example of, of some of the risks that are out there right now.
I mean, I think two things that we could, we could use is where, where you can point out in the budget that we are containing costs or trying to contain costs. And I think one of the places we can show is, is in our contract settlement, that we're much lower than the rest of the county as far as the increase in salaries. So, I think that, that's one thing we can point to. But if there are other things that you folks can point to, and the second is going back to what we asked for at the last meeting, of what would a zero percent increase look like, what would we have to cut? At least that's from my perspective, what would be helpful.
Yeah, I, I mean, rather than specific guidance, I, I look at two things. One, and the forecasted finish to me is, is as much a message around, you know, I mean, I look at what Burlington's done already with putting kind of a freeze in, which is not really a, I, I look at it as just a, another level of approval. You know, do we need to think about some rigor in the back half of the year that would, would ensure that we're potentially creating a little bit of upside that could go into the following year's budget, for instance, if, if it's available? We've had a lot of surprises this year, so I, I know we've been, we've been fortunate that we've been able to cover those on a one-off basis. But I think the things I looked at, I think, you know, pointing to the areas where we have cost containment, I, I do anticipate that we need to have a really rigorous look at the student-staff ratios and I think the per pupil spending. I think those are two things that are getting a lot of visibility right now. And I know, as a board member, when I'm out there selling the budget, I wanna be able to speak to those in particular. From a, from a total number standpoint, the only reaction I'd have to what was, what was shown today was the, the fact that the number was higher than the past a couple of years. So, that, that would be my observation.
I understand that the Budget Committee has been reconstituted, is that correct?
It is.
Were we hearing anything from them directly?
Excuse me?
We, we, our two people today, our two people in the audience are from the Budget Committee and that went home, but, so, yeah, we meet tomorrow night, yeah, so we're...
Thank you.
We had two meets, two meetings this week, so, yeah, we'll be hearing. I'm sure we'll be hearing, because I, I think, I was really, I'm kinda spent tonight, because the other night, they were just, we, we got through about six of your slides, Dan. You know, it was, it was, it was good.
I didn't intend to bog the process down.
No, no, it was good. It was good, so, thank you.
Did you wanna comment, John, on my...
Oh, I did, I did wanna say that I think this baseline is, is good. Last year, when the baseline, we did the same thing, once again, a year ago, the same night, and it was four-point-one percent operating costs. And we, we cut that down quite a bit, so it's, it's, I think it's good to have this discussion.
Yeah, and to your comment, Martin, about the, the commissioner's, you know, kind of recommendation or anticipation, not really knowing where that came from, I don't know if business managers were solicited for feedback or it was just a little more arbitrary, but I, I don't put as much weight into that as what we see rolled up from our local team.
You know, you've, I don't know if you've all met Brad James, but he, he's been around since Act sixty started and he pulls all that stuff together. He, he, he asks people, but there's nothing, there's nothing extensive he gets from people, so he's, we were talking today, I wonder what happens if he ever leaves the state because he does all those sheets. Yeah, anyway.
So, I do have one other thing I just wanted to reiterate in that is that... I am concerned about the other two tax rate parameters and what's happening there. The one on the non-resident one, because it's not rising as fast as the resident side and that gap is a problem in South Burlington because we are what some of our residents believe is inverted. Because in most towns, the non-resident tax is higher than the resident tax. And secondly, as I read the commissioner's recommendation level, there's quite a big increase in the income sensitivity tax, base tax rate. The exact numbers, I guess, I don't know right now, but I'm trying, but as I read it, it's substantial. And my concern there is that that might sensitize a bunch of voters who have not participated really actively in the discussion.
Which is good and bad. I mean, we want...
It's good that they're involved, but...
They want everybody to have skin in their hands.
Their partition maybe.
But not, but now, it makes the education process, and the, and the necessary requirement to understand that, you know, far, I think far more important than it has been.
I think we're gonna need to get out in front of that communication plan.
Yeah, actually, we didn't really have it. I put a note on our agenda that we, we probably at our next meeting to include a line item. I know, we can jump ahead a little bit, but on a communication plan specifically.
Yep, all right, great. I appreciate the feedback and, John, I appreciate the hard work.
Thanks, John.
He's had a lot of things going on with audits and loading contracts and auditors in his office, coming again tomorrow and putting this together. So, to he and Amity and his staff, I appreciate the work.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Nine. We've got two-point-oh and two-point-five to review.
Correct. So, you've seen this, it's been in front of you before, and changes have been highlighted in, in yellow. And I'll let you kinda take it away, I, I think we've gone through these with, we've gone through this one in the past.
Can I jump right into what one of my concerns, my only concern really?
We've got it.
Is, under the global executive constraint, the second sentence that provides that the superintendent shall not fail to provide a continuous improvement process, including a complaint process. And I didn't see any evidence, well, first of all, I don't see any interpretation of that particular clause, or sentence, I should say, of the global executive constraint. So, maybe you can't provide evidence, because there's also not evidence really of what is, you know, what is the continuous improvement process, what is happening for that, and what's the status of the complaint process? Other than that, I thought this was good.
Other than that little piece.
So, I guess what I, I would throw out there as a possibility is whether you can take a crack at interpreting what that last provision means and bring this back at the next meeting?
Can you just, can you just say that again? Because you're, you're saying this thing in bold?
No, the, the, in the global executive constraint, the second sentence.
Okay.
The superintendent shall not fail to provide a continuous improvement process, including a complaint process. I mean, there's not evidence...
Does he need to interpret that?
Well, I don't know what it means. And, I mean, I could, I could...
I mean, I can guess what it means.
Well, I guess I could guess what it means, but I think it's up to the superintendent to actually have interpreted what that means.
Well, regardless of an interpretation, there's no evidence.
Well, there's, there is evidence in complaints, right, that we're, that we're dealing with those.
Yeah, he's got a whole list of what the complaints are and how they're being addressed.
Improvement.
Well, isn't, isn't dealing with them continuous improvement?
No.
Well, you could say so, but I'd like the superintendent to say so.
If a complaint results in modifying a procedure to eliminate the cause of that thing, that's an improvement in the process.
Right.
That's the sort of thing, right?
I...
I mean, there could be proactive ones and there could be reactive ones. Reactive improvements would be the complaints. Proactive ones would be you identified some way to do something better and adopted it.
Yeah, what I would say to that is that, you know, in the, like, attachment too, so you see that, you know, there's like treatment of staff, and then there's, so we've got kind of a situation, and then we've gone to resolution, right? And so, maybe that's not completed enough, so...
Well, you know, my, my, I think Martin brings up a good point, because my recollection of the discussion of this and just the way this is phrased, is that continuous improvement isn't predicated on a complaint. It's really identifying proactively areas of potential improvement, which I think you've got good examples of. And, and a complaint process is part of that, typically a way to identify areas that might need some improvement, but not exclusive of other areas.
So, I'm, I'm fine to take, again, I, I think from the interpretation, does not specifically identify what is interpreted as continuous improvement.
Yeah, and if I recall, I didn't, that sentence was added, I mean, that was not originally part of this executive constraint.
Thank you, Martin.
And I just don't think we've ever had the interpretations.
Yeah, it's good. So let me, let me take a shot at it.
All right, 2.5.
So this is new to you, again, this one came to you first at the last board meeting, and we moved it. And so, I don't know what your pleasure would be, we can, again, a lot of this is maybe new information to you, I don't know how much, so, I don't know, if you want to walk through it, or would you like, John, to highlight the changes that are noted in yellow? What would be your pleasure, and how much time do you want to spend on this? This is kind of your final push for the evening. You good?
I think it's general comments about, and I don't know if it's possible to get the dates, but things like several years, several years back and long ago, do we, are we able to kind of document when those things were?
Where is that, where is that?
She's on page two, top.
Like, unrecorded bank account, several years ago, a grant to maintain a school, do we know, do we have when that was? You know, it's more specificity with the language. And that student, student activity accounts were long ago established, and just, I don't know.
Some of them, some of them I.
If we have the dates, just to have some specificity, rather than, specific language, rather than.
Some of them predate, so, I mean, so, I think.
Do they predate monitoring reports in general?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm trying to figure out how to get these done efficiently. And normally, I would have rewritten this, but I basically just downloaded our answer to the auditors, and so, I don't know the answer to these.
I think it's sufficient, in particular, for the first one, that it's been corrected. So it's a little, little less important than the second one, where it's not necessarily been corrected yet, but still, if you don't have that date, it's more important to understand what's been done to correct it.
Right, and it was just a thought, it's not, you know, like, oh, I really need, you know, if it's available, to kind of document.
Right.
Get some specificity.
Since we're on that first detailed policy, my question with that is, you say you report non-compliance, and then you talk about the nutritional services deficit, but in the evidence, you've actually shown two areas of non-compliance. The one is with respect to the student activity counts, and you've laid out three things that are being done. You know, these accounts should be accounted, you know, in the middle there, after the however.
Yeah.
But that's not then put into the compliance plan.
Right.
You're not saying that these are the things that you will do to comply with that.
So, reporting non-compliance, and then these are the things we're gonna do.
Right.
Right, I mean, you say what you're doing with nutritional services, but not with the student activity accounts. So we can't really judge whether we agree with whether the compliance plan is sufficient or not.
And that, the July 1st on the fundraising, what year is that?
On number three, bullet point three. This year. Past.
14.
Yeah.
See, I think that was intended to be 14, and then the question is, did that occur? So, there does need to be some reconciliation with dates there.
No, it didn't occur, that's what Alyssa presented in October at Chamberlain School, so it wasn't done by July 1.
Well, parts of it was done. But it has been done, though, it's still been done.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an ongoing.
Effort.
There's a lot of parts.
Well, the committee was put in place, and there was review going on.
Right.
The new procedures were not ready by July 1.
Well, that's, yeah, I think.
That's indicated in what we were rectifying.
I think if, that's where, if you're gonna kind of cut and paste from the audit report, then it has to be adjusted to the modern report timeframe. I had a question on page 5, on the city attorney. This seems to be, I struggled with how to interpret that, because we did not ask the attorney to look into something specific. And it seems like this is information that, I don't know, that we stumbled across it through the city attorney's efforts, or, at any rate, it's new information to us, correct? The 20 days?
It's new, because I asked, we talked, in our, in our relations with the new administration over there, I talked to them about, we have tax notes all the time, and usually it's for a week. And so they have to sign them, and they said, well, it got the treasurer thinking, well, we collect your taxes on the 12th or 15th, and you're borrowing money for this period from the 20th till the 5th.
Right.
And they went and researched, they asked the city attorney to research, to help us, is what, how it worked.
So, well, I'm trying to interpret, did we, so did we assume that we had to be borrowing that money? I mean, I know I've approved those tax anticipation notes for years.
We were told, we were told many times by prior administration over there, city clerk and such, that we'll give you the money by law 20 days after the, after the collection of taxes. And I do believe that most treasurers have that rule.
Yeah.
But legally, it's up to 20 days, so that's the difference.
They have the money, they can give it to you all.
Yes, yes.
You just can't give it to you all.
That's right, they can give you in that 20-day period, yes.
So I know, you know, I mean, I know we aren't paying a lot of interest on that, but it kind of begs the question of, you know, what else don't we know? That we're sort of assuming past practice has been, is the way it's been done, and that, I mean, if that does create work on our part, and a modest amount of interest, but it creates a liability window, that we've done that kind of typically, what, three or four times a year, usually?
Every, three times when taxes are.
Yeah, so I mean, in my tenure on the board, we've approved those, you know, 27, 30-some-odd times. It.
No, I, I was pretty thankful, we didn't, you didn't have to do one of those in October, before November. I have to say, though, you have to watch your cash flow pretty closely, until the, it was, it was pretty close, you know, so, yeah.
So, I'm wondering if there is a way in which, so a lot of this stuff is redundant with the audit records, and there's an awkwardness in the timing, if we're about to have a new audit report, and we just get this stuff. Is there some way that this could be structured, so that it makes use of the audit report as a dominant evidence to say something was, you know, just summarizing the compliance and the non-compliance? And time it, instead of at this time of year, do it a month after the audit happens, or something like that? Would that be at all helpful? I mean, some of the stuff isn't in the audit, but, but it seems like a lot of it is, the audit stuff. And then there's this, I think we've had this discussion before about the timeliness of the reports that are available, and the time that you can report it.
Right.
It's just sometimes very awkward to get quoted a 2013 number in 2015, right?
I think it's gonna be more awkward if we try to time it with the audit, though.
I was thinking, just, you know, reasonable, reasonable time after the audit. But I'm, I'm making it as a suggestion, and I'm just.
I mean, you make the monitoring schedule.
Only saying it because we're gonna have this discussion on these points again in January.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe, maybe we can ask, maybe we can ask what others are doing that are in a similar place. Maybe they've had a revelation like that.
Well, are we free to set our own schedule for when the monitoring report takes place?
Absolutely, it's in your purview to change those, those dates, yeah.
So do we just want to put this off, and, when's the audit report due again? When is that?
Well, we're a little, we're a little behind getting them information to finish it. They're all done with their work, they're waiting on our fixed assets, and the actuary report that just came, so there's, just one open item, and I'm, I'm almost done reviewing that, so, sorry. I'll answer your question. Probably first of February.
Don't start being me now.
Probably first of February at this point.
Well, I mean, does it make sense to, at this point, put this off until February? We have one correction for that, for that first bit, but.
When's the last time we signed off on this report?
We haven't done it since last winter, right?
Yeah.
Do we have a date on it?
Hmm, we did this.
Well, at some point, we're gonna have to kind of reestablish, if we're gonna start doing it that way, as Dan suggests. It makes a lot of sense.
I guess I would want to know what John thinks.
Well, you know, I, in doing this report, some, some of the stuff I'm reporting doesn't seem to be as relevant as it was when we first did it six years ago. This report, 2.4 on our financial reporting made a lot of sense, but this one is like, oh, does this really help you? That's, I had that idea, there's just a lot, and then, so if I'm documenting something, I'm gonna document it, but it, I'm not sure if it's helpful. I'm not quite sure if it's hard to read for someone who's not in the finance office all the time. Is it relevant, you know? Some of the stuff won't ever be relevant, but it has to be reported. It's.
Well, to modify the timing, you would actually put a sort of post-budget approval and post-audit, which makes this kind of a summary report of those two significant events.
Sure, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Does that make more sense to you?
I mean, this, this report, I think that 2.4, the other one, should be more often.
Yeah.
First, we started doing quarterly, but it's all your time, so, so we did it annually, and quite frankly, that, I don't get a chance to tell you what's going on as much as I should.
Well, that's not good.
No, well, I mean.
I definitely find, myself, 2.4 more easy to read and informative.
So, yes, to answer your question, sure.
So, it sounds like you're almost suggesting that this one get eliminated, and we pay more attention to the other one.
Well, you can't, I know we can't do that, but.
Well, if I look at, if I look at the details on here, it really is a summary of the budgeting process and the audit.
Yeah.
Combined, yeah.
Which, it could be changed.
To reflect those things in a more simple format, could it not?
Possibly, yeah.
Would we have to do, like, readings? You know, like, if we change any language?
No, not necessarily, only if we change the, the policy itself, but if there needs to be a change in interpretations and the acceptable evidence, there's a lot of leeway for that. And is it possible that our, our two board members with the keenest financial acumen, I mean, well, that just doesn't include me. Could work, could work with John and.
It just scares me that you're gonna be in the house.
Right now.
Spending our money.
I'm gonna call you every time, they're not, they're not putting me on appropriations or ways and means, so.
Thank God.
I have an idea. I know that this is the year of not working in the committees, but if, if that was a committee, there was a committee, we looked at not only the evidence, but then the relevance, the, if it's apropos, you know, the best, the best, best evidence, other than just, and I'd, I'd be happy to do that, and then come to the board.
Well, and along with David, is even though you get to do the interpreting, but if you're working in conjunction with. I mean, I will volunteer to be on there, you just don't want me.
Well, we, I'm sure you could run it by any board member individually or collectively, but it sounds like this one, we're gonna review the relevance of it. You can review the interpretation. We'll revise our calendar to really look at a timing on this one that would be post-budget, post-audit. And then I think at the same time, I think it's important to listen to John's feedback, that when we're doing the calendar, we might add 2.4 back in, at least, yeah, at least twice.
And we used to do it twice a year, didn't we?
We, he said, we were doing it quarterly, I guess.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, the only thing I'm seeing on here that, just right out of the gate, is any corrective actions that come from the state or federal audit. But if, if it's comprehensive of audits, post-audit, then that should be captured as well.
Sure.
So is everyone in agreement with that, that plan? I think that makes sense.
I am, I think it'd be less frustrating for everybody.
All right, we'll move on to setting the agenda for the January 7th meeting. I did make a note, maybe under the budget, include a communication plan discussion.
So we'll just add a bullet under there.
Just remind me, in January, we are planning three meetings, one devoted to the budget, is that where we're headed?
January 7th is the presentation of the administration's recommended budget, and then the next week is the board can either approve or, that's what it's for.
So that second meeting would be focused on the budget?
Yes, it's a special meeting for the budget, January 14th.
I think we've planned it as the board doubts the budget.
Yeah.
And then we've got the 20.
Second, 21st and 22nd.
Yeah. 21st is Steering Committee.
So we do 7, 14, 22.
And 22nd is Board Meeting, Thursday.
Yes, our board meetings.
Our board meetings.
Yeah, and 21 is Steering Committee.
Yeah.
Anything else for the meeting on the 7th?
No, just the, one thing to highlight, we, Elizabeth, we talked about this when we do visit other schools, which we don't, which we do once a month, we rotate it. We will add in an end celebration.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, just so that you're not surprised by that, the idea of that would be, you know, something that the school's doing, particularly that is, you know, in a team, or working towards the end, so that you get a chance to see maybe some of the, some of the, you know, could be some students, could be some staff, could be administrator, whatever, kind of give you a little bit of a.
That's the next meeting?
That would be our, that would be our January 7th meeting. Again, it could be, it's, it's a short period of time, we're talking about, you know, in that 10, 15-minute range, but just an idea to give kind of artifacts of activity happening around ends.
And you can probably modify 2.5 to sort of be an adjustment to the calendar. I don't know if you want it, I don't think we need the recommendations specifically in that two-week timeframe, or whatever we're at. All right, anything else for the 7th? All right, we'll move on to future agenda items. Is there anything on the list that would fall under a policy?
Fall under what?
Well, I, again, one of the things that, you know, so, Elizabeth's thing was, is there anything under the future agenda items that might fall under a policy? So for me, when I look at like, continuous improvement plan, I think about, you know, 2.0. When I think about performance evaluation of administrators, I think about it being in 2.2, treatment of staff. Now, and the same thing with.
With teachers up to eight.
Well, yeah, that's right, so I'm just, part of that, instead of doing, instead of doing, and I'm not wanting to say, I don't want to report out of that, but when we have these items that come up, it may say it should be under 2.0, and, oh, by the way, because it's a big item, we'd like to move that up, David, and hear it sooner, or we expect to see it, you know, in, when the monitoring report comes due.
So one thing I think we can do, just, I think, to start developing this discipline, is just put the policy number beside items, so that at least there's a parking lot for them, and when the policy comes up, if we haven't reviewed it before, that, at minimum, we'll get a review during that policy.
What about schools' foundation of financial conditions and activities?
The schools' foundation update.
Could we have an update in, in that context of that policy?
Yeah, I, you know, I didn't go into, I haven't, I mean, I think even education quality standards, some of those could, could fit in there too, but some of these are just education, you want some education on. You've had some data on EQS already. Foundation, I don't know, it's likely, that's part of the work, is that, you know, where does this park in policy? does this park in policy for the, for you folks and then am I, is it, is it articulated in the policy and responded to in evidence?
Yeah, I mean, and there's two aspects of it. I'm just talking about the EQS, I'm not talking about the foundation, you know, which probably belongs in 2.10, which is your curriculum policy for one. And two, pretty soon, you're actually going to have to pass, you know, one of those Vermont policies.
Right.
That is, what is your graduation requirements based on proficiency? So, you know, I don't know exactly when we'll be prepared to bring that forward, but there will be, you know, we're looking to see if there's a model policy coming out, you know, that will address that as well. So it's, it's got two policy aspects, you know, one within the policy governance and two within those questions of like mandatory policies.
I think, I can't remember which one it falls under, but compliance with state.
Right.
Policy would be whatever our version is.
Well, what I think we could do is, we'll, we'll bring back the same future agenda items and we'll put the policy that we think is applicable and then we can, you know, I think that that may render assurance, we can keep it that way and take it off when you, when it comes up, right? So when 2.0 continuous improvement comes up, you'll know that it's there, then you take, you take it off future agenda because it's embedded in the, you know.
Can you just ask a question related to what Stuart said, when does the board have to adopt those, is there a specific date?
So we're, we're building a timeline right now, but on the theory that students will graduate in 2020 based on proficiency. We're also talking not just about PBGRs, not about PBLs, you know, that is proficiency based learning, because it's going to be a K-12 system, but by January of the present eighth graders being eighth, seventh graders being eighth graders, in other words, by next January, we will need to have that policy in place because we need to be able to have them sign up for courses and know what the graduation requirements are. So some time between today and how many readings, you know, we're going to have to work back. So probably at the latest, early fall would be when those, you know, would be coming to the.
Fall of 2015.
2015.
In time for the January deadline.
In order so that by, by, you know, January, we would be able to say, eighth graders and your parents, this is what it means when you graduate from South Carolina High School.
Thank you.
For, for future agenda items, I'm not sure where this fits, but I think that we should have a discussion about trends in substitute teachers, teaching, that, and maybe part of that.
Maybe that's part of the budget discussion.
Yeah, that's part of it, but I think also looking at if there's abuse somewhere, if, if there could be something done as far as enforcement at the building administrators' level, and I'm wondering as well whether that should in part be an executive session, if we're going to talk about.
By building.
By building or personnel and such.
I would, I would be probably, I mean, I'd have to know more about what you're thinking, whether it would, at the, on the surface level, I would say it would be, it would be hard stretch to put it in the executive session, we're going to talk about how it's, obviously if it gets personnel specific based on data.
Well, the problem is that, from my perspective, we talk about this a lot during labor negotiations and there's always the, the discussion that it's not really, there's no abuse of, of the system. So I think if there is.
Yeah, I mean, you, you do have to be, I mean, you have to know more about the, the moving parts because it's not, where it may not be abused, it may be one or two or three in the number of incidences that attribute to the cost increase, right? You have an individual that's out for a period of time because of, and under family medical leave, you know, those incidences can quickly add up, where there may not be abuse to individuals being out, it's, you know, smaller number of incidences based on, you know, qualifying conditions, right? So.
I, I guess what I, I want to know, are there, are there any systems in place or, or are administrators closely watching, for instance, a situation where there could be an individual who happens to be out taking sick leave on consecutive Mondays?
Yeah.
Doesn't seem to come in on Mondays or Fridays or whatever. And, and are those kind of situations being addressed? Because I hear about those kind of situations. And, and in fact, our, you know, administrators, if there's an individual who's out for three or four days, as, as we're allowed to do, as they're allowed to do, are they asking for proof?
Doctor's notes.
You know, doctor's notes and such.
Well, we're definitely, I mean, I don't, it's hard for me to know whether you think we're, you know, asking all the right questions or not. I mean, I think we're, I think we're asking a lot, I mean, when people are, we're asking for those things and certainly with, you know, Karen on board, we've definitely, definitely gotten much, you know, much more sequential in how we're dealing with this.
And yet we're going up $100,000 in the budget.
That's right.
I think the assurance is that we're talking about, I mean, I think you're almost going to what the underlying root cause may be. I think one of the questions we're asking is for our size of employee base, is this normal?
Usually, that's right.
Is this, what's the benchmark?
That's part of it, sure.
So part of it would be the benchmark, but I think the other is the consequence of learning continuity, because we know when, you know, if there's, you know, disrupted continuity consistently, like when David says it may, there may be one person, but multiple absences, we know that's not good for students. If, if the hours that we're seeing here represent, you know, 50 employees missing a day here and there, that's something different.
Yeah.
Like if there was a bad flu season or something, but learning, I'd say the benchmark and sort of impact on student learning, based on that benchmark, you know, that would, to me, would be the first barometer to suggest whether the data should be dug into a little bit more. I know, I know what you're saying, I feel like it's addressing it from the bottom up, which is not bad either, but.
Right, I, I guess I'm, it's, I'm coming at it from multiple directions, from, from the negotiating that, you know, whether there's stronger language, we can give administrators more tools, you know, I know we just, we have a while before the next contract, but there's no reason not to start thinking about that, that, from the budgeting side, as you said, from the continuity, you know, continuity to me is very important, but I consider that, you know, more the means and that, you know, as long as we're meeting the ends, that's the administration gets to figure that out. But where we have a door into really, I think, being able to look at that are those two I just mentioned as far as the, the budget negotiating, but also possibly performance evaluation, which we've added into the monitoring reports. So there's multiple ways that I think that we should be able to, you know, kind of get into the, I really don't want to get, well, at this, I mean, we've seen for, for four years that this keeps, is a trend, yeah.
Well, that, I mean, I think, I think this area can come up in conversation with budget. I mean, I think that's, I think that's appropriate that we give you that because it's, again, it's a, it's a pretty significant cost increase, it's been on, in front of us before, let's just give you a little bit more specifics, it won't be individual specific, it'll be obviously, you know, some cluster information. And then I think as we move forward, I mean, if it is a trend that we see, then we can talk about what our stopgap measures up to, including, you know, putting it on our list for conversation in contract, which is part of our, you know, not just teacher, but all, you know, our, all of our, our area, our employee groups. So, makes sense.
All right. So consider the minutes of the December 1st meeting, any changes? Okay, by consensus, those are approved and the minutes of the December 3rd meeting, any changes? All right, so by consensus, those are also approved. And we have a, any questions on AP orders 22, 23, or turning points 87? I think we have on agenda item 14, an AP order to the Howard Center in the amount of $57,604.75 as well as a AP order to Essex Community Education Center in the amount Want to add any clarification on those, David, or comments?
No, I think ones that you're, you're aware of.
Okay, do I have a motion to, do you want to approve those separately or together?
I think you can do them together, they're both actually.
A motion to approve both AP orders as recommended by administration?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes and do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.